Good afternoon, everyone. I will be chairing the meeting. I'm Vice Mayor Gail McLaughlin. Our mayor, Mayor Martinez, unfortunately, is ill today. But we will get going right now. And this is our first in-person meeting for a number of years. I think about three years with the pandemic. So we're excited to be back in person and, you know, learning how this will work that we now have a little different setup here. But we look forward to having an opportunity to be in person going forward. And at this point, we're going to start the open session prior to closed session. So City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bana?
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Presente.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Yeah, there we go.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin?
Here.
Councilmember Martin-- Vice Mayor, sorry, Martinez will be absent. Councilmember Willis is also absent. And Councilmember Zapata is absent.
All right. And City Clerk, I believe you wanted to make some announcements.
Yes. Have a couple of announcements to make. This is from KC RT. Please refrain from using phones and mobile devices on Zoom while in the council chambers. If you need to use your mobile devices, you should step outside. Also, and this includes anyone signing up for open forum, you must complete a pink speaker's card and file it with the city clerk prior to the council's consideration of an item. Once the city clerk has announced the item, no person shall be permitted to speak on the item other than those persons who have submitted their names to the city clerk. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. We will go to the public speakers that are attending in person first, and then we will follow with the Zoom participants. And all Zoom participants, as soon as we call the items, please raise your hand. And that's it.
All right. So thank you, City Clerk. Will you read the items for closed session?
Yes, and Councilmember Zapata is present. During closed session, the council will discuss the following items. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, City of Richmond versus Pacific Gas and Electric. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. There's one case. Conference with real property negotiators, the property. First property is at 1324 Canal Boulevard. That's General Warehouse, Port of Richmond. Agency negotiators, Dale, Dave Alshire, Lizette Zapata, and Annette Beecham. Negotiating parties, Richmond grown. Under negotiation are the pricing terms of payment. Second property is located at South 45th Street to the west, Wall Avenue to the south, Interstate 80 to the east, and the Bark Tracks to the north. Agency negotiators, Anita Luck, Lena Velasco, Jesus Morales, and Annette Beecham. Negotiating parties are Mayor Flores, Community Devco LLC. Under negotiation, pricing terms of payment. With conference with labor negotiators, agency representative, Sharone Taylor, and Jack Hugis. Employee organizations include SEIU Local 1021 Full-Time and Part-Time Units, IFPTE Local 21 Mid-Level Management and Executive Management Units, Richmond Police Officers Association, Richmond Police Management Association, IAFF Local 188, and Richmond Fire Management Association.
All right. Are there any-- is there any public comment before closed session?
Yes, we do have speakers. The speakers are Tania Swartz. Please come forward, followed by Jesus Beltran, Kevin Tisdale, Rosalyn Rauchum, Tiara Gonzalez, and our last in-person speaker will be Gregory Everett. You'll each have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Tania Swartz. I'm SEIU 1021 Chapter Secretary, city employee for over 30 years, and also a Richmond homeowner. As an employee, I can tell you that we are struggling with inflation. Our wages have been stagnant since 2015. We are not doing okay. Being a good employer is more than giving people holidays and medical insurance. It is giving people wages that are competitive and that we can survive on. It is hiring and keeping enough staff to complete all the work that is required. It is recognizing problems and addressing them head-on. We need the city to recognize that they have a problem. You have a problem with pay. You have a problem with retention. And you have a problem with morale. It is a slap in the face also to employees when we read the city council agenda that you want to spend $2 million on landscaping City Hall, yet you don't have an agreement with your employees for a cost of living increase. The priorities are askew. Our proposal is fair considering the Siegel Study is two years old and other neighboring cities have given their employees cost of living increases since that time. We are asking for some help and some relief. Thank you.
Jesus Beltran?
Hi, my name is Jesus Beltran. I'm a city employee for 17 years, and I also live in Richmond. By now, with the pay that we're getting, it's hard to keep employees. They keep leaving to other cities. And I guess like a temporary guys, they keep going to San Pablo because they make about $7 more an hour. That's a big difference. Every time we try to hire people, they don't even show up for the interview when they find out how much they're making. Or a lot of times, they get a better pay with a prior company, and they leave the city. We're not making enough money with you guys. And also, they have to deal with a lot of picking up homeless stuff. And it's not worth it for the amount of money that we provide. And also for us, all the other staff that we hear, we've been making the same amount of money for a while. And everything's going up, insurance, and property taxes between my houses. We're struggling out here. Everything helps.
Kevin Tisdale?
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council. Madam City Manager, City Attorney, Deputy Clerk, Clerk, staff. It's good to see everybody back post-pandemic while we're here. And welcome back to regular City Council life. So come before you today and ask you to consider SEIU's proposal to the equity study. As you know, the equity study is as of January 1st, 2021, and fails to take into account high rate-- recent high inflation that took place throughout 2021, 2022 to current. In previous sessions, you know, we've stated that employees are leaving. And this week, our most senior code enforcement officer just announced that they're leaving for a city less than five miles away to do the same job for about 30% more. So the city is risking its workforce, the morale, and the historical knowledge by not offering a fair living wage to its employees. The point of the city is to provide service to the community and to the residents. Vacancies throughout the city are high, but yet the expectations from the residents are very high as well. So, you know, we need to better balance that and give the employees a little bit more leverage. Your workers are dedicated. They work very hard every day to ensure the services are met. And the city has maintained it best as possible. Consider putting workers first in this pivotal moment so that the city can gain back its prestige in the public sector workplace. Thank you.
Robin Rauchum?
Roseanne?
Is it Roseanne? I'm sorry.
You're right. Hi, I'm Roseanne Raichan. I'm a resident most of my life. Grew up in Richmore Village, Nicolet Park. Now I live over on Downer Avenue, right near Berg Park. I've been an employee for over 20 years. I work at the Richmond Public Library. It's the best place to work in the Bay Area, maybe in the state. I want you to manage your responsibilities and do your duty as councilpersons. And it's my duty and responsibility as one of the lower-level workers to explain to you how much we're suffering. We are enduring the loss through inflation, the ability to raise our families in this community with health and love because we're struggling so much. We're short-staffed around the city. There's short staff of librarians and library assistants. We're underpaid. The class and comp study has proven this to you. Inflation is making our situation dire. Energy bills, food bills. I'm running out of money. It's all wearing us down. You're going to need a shovel to dig us out of the morale hole that you have put us into. 1021 has supported this city. They supported many of you and will continue to. Right now, we need your support. We need you to think long and hard of where the money is going to go to. It needs to go to us. We provide the services for the public. The little kids that come into the library need us. We hope you're listening to us tonight, and we hope you pass this on to everyone else. Thank you.
Tiara Gonzalez?
Hello. My name is Tiara Gonzalez, a member of SEIU 1021, parking enforcement for the Richmond Police Department. My employment began in August of 2022, and I'm a resident of the city as I've been for 18 years. Although I do enjoy working for the City of Richmond, the compensation is not enough. It's not enough to sustain my family in this city. And recently, I had the unfortunate situation of taking my daughter to the emergency room. And rather than focusing on her care, I was worried about paying for her medication when we left the emergency. Municipal employees should not have to worry about paying for medication when they're leaving an emergency room caring for their sick children. In the past three years, the city has hired three parking enforcement representatives. Two are currently working. One is in training. A city this size, that doesn't make sense. But it does when a lot of the qualified candidates are turning down the job after going through the hiring process because the compensation is not enough. The study here that you guys have, the numbers are completely off. That the numbers, when you actually go and look up the job titles and the descriptions, our pay in particular is actually at minimum 12% under the average, with the max being 22%. A comparable city of Berkeley, their parking enforcement representatives are making $20,000 more. And we have three people for an entire city that's 30 square land miles. You're not going to attract qualified candidates to help this city. The positions that we all have here are important. Every day during my shift, I'm flagged down constantly, asked by citizens, rightfully so, why are my streets not cleaned? Why is parking not enforced? You can't enforce parking and street sweeping if you don't have staff. It's just not feasible. And you can't attract staff if you're not going to pay people enough to live within the city that they live in, to work in the city that they live in.
Our last speaker is Gregory Everett.
Before you start, before you start my time, let me say, welcome back to in-person council. It's been a long time. The pandemic has really took a toll on everybody, but we're glad to see that you're back. Gregory Everett, 26-year-old city employee, president of SEIU Richmond Chapter. I'm not for the sit here and beat you over the head or repeat what everyone is saying. I'm going to say something else. I've been with the city 26 years. I'm born and raised here, in Richmond Hospital. Every employee who's ever worked here or that's currently working here, every council member that has been on council or been mayor is family. That's what I'm going to say. Family go through good times. Family go through bad times. I know that, I read the audit report, and it says bad times in the future. There's always been bad times. But we always, as a family, found a way around it. Basically, what I'm saying is, don't leave your family members behind, especially when we're, this union is one of the big part of the family who helps get through the bad times. Do not leave your family members behind.
We do have-- We have speakers on Zoom. Jess Ward?
Yes, I have two speakers. I have Fidencio Morales and Naomi Williams. Fidencio, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Mayor. My name is Fidencio Morales, and I'm a 1021 member. I've been a city employee for 15 years. I'm here to ask you to consider the proposal that was, that was brought about to you by the 1021. Also, please keep in mind that every city worker has a family that is must provide for. Mortgage payments, rent payments, rent supply, school's tuition, school's clothing, school uniforms, sports activities, car payments, utilities, and so on. This list can go on and on forever. When I hear that city workers are struggling to make ends meet, that's sad, embarrassing, and very unfair. I just want you guys to consider and please move forward with the, with this study. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Naomi Williams. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see your faces. However, I have been begging for more employees for years. But to date, you have added more work to the little employees that you do have, but no money. You know, the City Hall really needs updating. That's true. But we can't be using the money that you can give to your employees for an, for an increase. And the homeless to have a place to stay just for a pretty city council. We could volunteer and go out there and clean it up ourselves. That would be good. I'm finished.
Thank you. And that was the last public speaker.
So was that the last speaker?
Yes.
All right. So with that, we are adjourned to closed session. We have most of us here. KC RT is getting us going. All right. So, good to see everybody. Here we are in our first open session meeting since, since the pandemic. And we're going to get started by asking the City Clerk to call roll.
Councilmember Bana? Is absent for roll call. Councilmember Jimenez? Is absent for roll call. Oh, she's, she's on her way. She's present.
All right.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez? Vice Mayor McLaughlin, sorry.
I'm Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Yeah, he's, he's ill. I, I didn't mention that, that I'm filling in for the mayor because he's ill.
Hey, Vice Mayor McLaughlin?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Councilmembers Zapata?
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Bana? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, City Clerk. With that, would you read the next study?
Okay, I'll just make a couple of announcements real quick.
Oh, please do, yeah.
From the IT department, KC RT, please refrain from using phones and mobile devices on Zoom while in the council chambers. If you need to use your devices, please step outside. And for in-person, to address the council on items appearing on the agenda, including signing up for open forum, speaker cards must be filed with the clerk prior to the council's consideration of the item. Once the item is introduced, no person shall be permitted to speak on the item other than those who have submitted a speaker phone. Joining via Zoom, once an item is called, please raise your hand by clicking on the participant button at the bottom of your screen. And please be ready to address the council when called upon to speak. Only those speakers with their hand raised once the speakers are called will be recognized to address the council.
All right. I do want to mention for the council members and for the public that we don't have our, our request to speak or our technology working yet for voting. So voting will be manually. There will be roll call for voting. And if people want to speak, if council members want to speak, we have this beautiful image of a hand, not unlike we use for the electronic hand. So council members just hold it up, and I'll keep looking both ways. But if I should miss you or something, say, I, I need to speak or something like that, and I'll, and I'll be sure to relinquish the floor to you. So with that, City Clerk, next item.
Next item is item H, Statement of Conflict of Interest. Are there any? Hearing none. Item I is Agenda Review. And Vice Mayor, I do have a couple of requests to continue item N, like Nancy seven D, like David, to March 21st, March 28th. No, I'm sorry, March 21st.
Okay.
Then we have another request to continue item Q three to March 28th. And we want to make sure that's the first item that we hear.
Okay. So City Clerk, you're saying N dot seven dot D. I know we talked about that, like taking it off of consent calendar, but now we're taking it--
To the next--
To the next meeting.
And that's a request from staff. Staff is not present tonight.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember DeMans.
Yeah, I would like to make sure that that, um, item doesn't get into consent calendar. I feel like, uh, somebody from the public, uh, got it, uh, uh, off the consent calendar last time. So I don't know why, uh, the, the item got back on consent calendar this time. So I just wanted to make sure that, um, is, when it's agendized, that it's agendized for a public, uh, comments. Thank you.
All right. Looks like that's it in terms of agenda review. Next item.
Next item is item J, report from the city attorney of final decisions made during closed session.
Yes, uh, our members of council, the items listed on the closed session agenda. The first item, C one, which is, uh, existing litigation with PG&E. Uh, we gave a staff's report on that, and, uh, the, uh, council gave direction to its, uh, negotiators concerning settlement. Uh, with regards to item C two, which is, uh, exposure to litigation one case, that item was not discussed. Uh, with respect to item, uh, C three, uh, the, uh, project on, uh, thirteen twenty-four Canal Boulevard, uh, General Warehouse, we gave a, uh, staff's report on that. Do, direction was, uh, given to the city attorney concerning negotiations. With respect to the second item of C three, which is the, um, property known as Miraflores, that item was not discussed. And with respect to labor negotiations with the various bargaining units, uh, there was, uh, discussion on the status of the various negotiations, and direction was given to the city's labor negotiations for continued negotiations. That's the closed session report.
Okay. Thank you, city attorney. Next item, please.
Next item is item K, is report from the city manager.
Good evening, Vice Mayor McLaughlin and members of the city council. Um, I would first like to acknowledge staff, uh, for all the work they've done preparing us to return to in-person meetings. In particular, I would like to acknowledge the city clerk's office, the city council office, the IT department, including KCRT, and our public works department. Um, various staff throughout the city of Richmond, as well as, uh, RPD, who's here this evening, have been involved in helping us prepare, and I, I want everyone to know that this is certainly a heavy lift to get all of this coordinated and everything made, uh, to accommodate in-person meetings. And we're ha, we're hoping that it runs smoothly, and we will be on a cap path of continuous improvement in the coming days. Um, in terms of announcements, um, wanna just let everyone know that the FEMA trailer, um, had, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA trailer, has been, uh, in the parking lot, uh, again today, and they will be there again tomorrow from eight AM to five PM. Uh, this is the Nevin parking lot between Twenty-Fourth and Twenty-Fifth Street. Um, they are here to help, um, to assist with disaster recovery for residents that were impacted by the December twenty-twenty-two and January twenty-twenty-three storms. If you have any questions, uh, and need assistance, please call the city manager's office at five one oh six two zero six five one two. Again, five one oh six two zero six five one two. Uh, in addition, I'd like to acknowledge that we're holding our city of Richmond's Sixteenth Annual Sisters in Solidarity International Women's Day Celebration on Saturday, March eleventh, here at the Richmond Memorial Convention Center Auditorium at four oh three Civic Center Plaza from ten AM to two PM. Um, the event will, is free. Uh, myself, deputy city managers LaShonda White and Nick, Nikki Maske, um, will just, will be on a panel and discuss topics of embracing equity. Other activities include entertainment, socializing, poetry, and zumba. Um, we're especially excited about honoring local women from our community, as well as courageous women um, in Richmond's police and fire departments. Um, sponsor organizations will be on hand to provide informational resources. So please bring your family, friends, and colleagues to hang out with us and celebrate Women's Day. Um, if you have any questions, please contact Trina Jackson Lincoln at five one oh six two zero six five eight one. Again, five one oh six two zero six five eight one. Lastly, um, we're conducting a survey for the Hilltop Horizon specific plan. Um, if you would like to pa, provide input on this community plan, which is for a hundred and forty-five acre area in the Hilltop Regional Shopping Center, please visit hilltophorizon.com and respond to the survey. The survey will close on March fifteenth at twenty twenty-three at twelve PM. If you have questions regarding the Hilltop Horizon specific plan and the community survey, please contact Roberta Feliciano at five one oh six two zero six 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 two. Again, five one oh six two zero six 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 two. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager Curl. Um, with that, city clerk, please read the next item.
Our next item is open forum for public comment.
I think we have, um.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item L, the abatement report from the public works department.
Good evening, Vice Mayor McLaughlin, city council members. For a moment, I, I thought I was gonna, gotta pass this tonight. Uh, please, um, KCRT staff, if you can bring this to.
Excuse me, one moment, Director, um, Chavaria. Um, it is a little soft. Is there any way we can get the volume up?
Daniel, can you also speak louder? Can you try again to speak a tad louder before we ask KCRT to assist?
Yes, I, I will speak louder.
Okay, a little bit louder.
Screen.
Technical issues here. I, I hope you hear me.
Yes, please.
Far away.
Yes, please act like you're at a Forty-Niners game. Thank you.
Will do. So, eh, eh, good evening, uh, Vice Mayor McLaughlin and city council members. My name is Daniel Chavaria. I'm the public works director. I'm gonna make a presentation of a, of the abatement update for the month, uh, month of February of twenty twenty-three, what we did last, last month. Next, please. Last month, we have two dumpster days, specifically at the neighborhoods of East Shore and Parkview. Next, please. At East Shore, we, eh, remove almost one ton of debris and, 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 and trash. Uh, one dumpster in total. And at Parkview, we removed five dumpsters, almost four tons of trash debris. We assisted sixteen seniors and disabled people. And in total, it was, uh, a four point seven seven tons of trash removed. Next, please. There are different items that we removed, and I just wanna bring to your attention that eh, you can see in these two pictures, on the left side and the right side. You can see that in terms of volume, these, eh, eh, items would take about, about the same volume. However, the items on the left, and just to give you some examples, old furniture in suitcases, eh, definitely, eh, weight less than the items on the right, which you can see is a washer, dryer, and, and toilet. And I'll bring this eh, um, eh, comment later in my presentation. Next, please. In illegal dumping, we remove a hundred and sixty-six, sixty-three tires, two hundred and thirteen mattresses. All of these at three hundred and thirty-two locations all over the city. In total, we removed almost a hundred and seventy tons of trash and debris. Next, please. We also removed ninety-seven gallons of paint and oil. Next, please. In terms of encampment abeyments, we performed six of them in the month of February. A total of twelve point two tons of trash and debris removed from these encampments, including two cleanups at Castro Encampment, for a total of two dumpsters and about one point four tons at that encampment. Next, please. In summary, the month of February, we removed a little bit over a hundred and eighty-five tons of debris and trash. Eh, the majority of them going to illegal dumping. Next, please. In terms of wet abeyment, we, eh, we performed this task at various, various locations, including the North Richmond Mitigation Area, the Richmond Parkway, and the Bay Trail. Next, please, next, please. We dismantled four RVs that were abandoned in our city for a total of fourteen point three tons of debris. Next, please. We also did graffiti removal, two hundred and twelve tags removed all over the city at ninety-two locations. Next, please. In terms of staff hours, you can see in this eh, slide that about, just by the, the, the pie chart, about seventy-five percent of our time goes to illegal dumping. For a total of six, eh, eh, one thousand six hundred and fifty hours of our staff. Followed by graffiti abeyment and wet litter abeyment. Compared to last month, this is less than what we did in January. Eh, there are two eh, reasons for that. Number one, February is a shorter month than January. And number two, in February, we, eh, one of our temporary workers ran out of hours, out of the thousand hours that we can hire them as temp, and we were one eh, staff member short. Next, please. This is a new graph that we're gonna start presenting to you to, 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 to find a, a, eh, to, to trace the change eh, during the year. As you can see, when we measure by tons, the month of February, we did less than in the month of January. However, and as I, I mentioned in the picture where the, 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 the volume is about the same, but the type of trash or debris is different, that the measuring this by tons is a little bit misleading. So I wa, just wanna explain that eh, sometimes we can have the same amount of dumpster eh, removed from, from our eh, public right-of-way. But some, some cases, eh, we have heavier elements in those dumpsters, even though they, they take the same amount of volume or similar amount of volume. One, uh, possibility is that in January, also, a lot of people after the holidays eh, got rid of all items when they got probably new ones during the holidays. And that's why we see this spike in January. We will know more as we keep eh, tracing these eh, numbers to see how things move. Next, please. And with that, that concludes my presentation, acknowledging our partners, partners, eh, the police department, eh, the Republic Services Corps and Sims Medal. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Chavaria. Um, I just wanna commend you and your staff for all the hard work in cleaning up our city and, and the various works, uh, that you do throughout the city. So thank you very much. Um, do any other members of the council have any comments? Uh, Doria, and then, I'm sorry, Councilmember Robinson, and then Councilmembers Zepeda.
It's just a, a quick question, um, about the dumpster days. Now, I wonder if you are, um, doing any tracking or any kind of assessment to see if there's a positive impact of using the dumpster days on illegal dumping, on decreasing illegal dumping?
Thank you, eh, Councilmember Robinson. So eh, that's a good question, and that's exactly why we're tracing all our, all these numbers eh, starting this year. I cannot, I don't have enough information, data, to, to answer that question at this moment. Um, so, eh, in the next few months, I believe I will be able to provide more, more insight. But I can tell you that with these dumpster days, eh, the community eh, takes advantage of them, and especially our seniors and, eh, in eh, in, in people with disability in, in our city.
Just one follow-up to that. Um, is there a difference in the staff time? Um, eh, I wonder if the dumpster days take more or less staff time than the way that you pick up illegal dumping in other ways?
Not necessarily, because the, our dump eh, dumps eh, eh, dumpster days are on the Saturdays, and, uh, they are eh, our staff is dedicated to, to help the, the community those days, specifically at the specific, um, neighborhoods. So we have this all, all year long, and, uh, eh, I believe this month, we have three dumps, dumpster days. Um, I don't have the calendar with me, but every single neighborhood will have this opportunity.
Okay, Councilmembers Zepeda.
Uh, just following up a little bit on what Councilmember Robinson said. Uh, in, in Hilltop, at least, when we had a dumpster day there, we had maybe one or two staff members for the whole day. So I'm just trying to figure out if we quantify one or two staff members for multiple locations versus, I'm assuming a lot more staff members running around the city trying to pick up what people are dropping. Uh, there's, is there a potential cost savings there? If we maybe do more dumpster days, it's good, I guess that's what I'm getting at. If we do more dumpster days, uh, less staff is required, because we also have community volunteers. I know that I was there helping people load and unload their trash. So I'm not sure.
Daniel, do you want me to go ahead and take that, just for historical context? This is city manager. So, um, Councilmember Zepeda, by way of background, this, um, starting last year and then moving into fiscal year twenty-three is the, we've been trying to scale up the number of, of neighborhood cleanups. And so, um, we, they used to not happen in every neighborhood. So this year, for twenty twenty-three, we are budgeted and staffed and scheduled to have them in every neighborhood. Um, and so the idea is that we do believe that can create a cost savings, and then that will also allow us to focus more on the hotspots, um, in certain neighborhoods there, does, because of where the, uh, transfer station is located. Um, since we host the transfer station in our community, we receive a, there's a residual impact for that. And so, um, part of what we're trying to do is develop the, the data and the analysis to better target and, um, and deploy staff, as well as identify what neighborhoods appear to need more cleanups, right? So, for example, multi-level housing units, um, they tend to, or units, uh, in excess of four units. They, they're, currently, they're not included, uh, to have the bulky item picked up for free. So it's very important that we offer the services where we have multiple, uh, fam, multifamily units, uh, so we can try to decrease the amount of illegal dumping.
Thank you. And following up on that, are we able to quantify? So thanks for the, all the great graphs in there. Uh, Daniel, are you able to quantify, uh, maybe in the future, the cost to remove? It looks like there was two thousand two hundred and eighty hours spent collecting trash. And approximately, it's twenty eighty for one full-time employee a year. And if we just quantify pay plus benefits, you know, give or take here and there, it's a lot of money just for one person. And so twenty eighty might be a lot of money. So if we're able to quantify, so we can try to come up with some sort of creative ideas and see what we have on both ends.
Yes, we can start to include that in the monthly report.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, city manager, I wanted to follow up. I think I brought this to your attention before. Uh, um, some residents from Marina Bay were concerned that they did not get dumpster days. And I forget what the reason was, but, um, did you, were you able to follow?
I believe that's been addressed, but I can confirm, uh, with staff tomorrow and get back to you, but I believe it has been addressed in our schedule.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you very much. All right. It looks like, um, we're finished with that. Are there any? I don't, this particular item, as well as the city manager's report, could be, uh, addressed if people want to speak on it during open forum. So, city clerk, will you read the next item?
The next item is item M, and that is open forum. And the public may comment on items that remain on the consent calendar or items that are not on the agenda. You're limited to two minutes. We'll start with the speakers in the chambers, and there are nine speakers. Speakers are Julie Perez, Rick Perez, Michael Glickson, Jane Corant, Joe Puleo, Ken Lin, Kathleen Wymer, Jamin Purcell, and Tony Tumite. Those speakers, please go forward.
Hi. My name is Julie Perez. I'm not originally a resident, but I am a business owner, a property owner. But more importantly, I'm PD Perez's mother. And I was listening to the last meeting. You guys are getting ready to start some new crisis call centers, and you have urban strategies working with you. But I'm not really understanding where PD's scenario is gonna fall into this. What happened to PD was a random loitering check done by police on their normal routines, their patrols. So um, where does this fall? Where does what happened to PD fall with this? How does somebody go to disperse random loiters with nothing but locals, residents hanging out, and an unarmed person ends up being shot to death? I don't know where it falls. Does it fall under sensitive training, community policing? I'm not sure. But what I know is Rick talks to a lot of the police in Richmond. Not one of them has ever acknowledged knowing who PD is or what happened to him. Also, community policing. Community policing was at a very positive point when PD was killed. How is that community policing? How does an officer go into a neighborhood just to disperse loiters who are all residents from of that area, and an unarmed person ends up being shot to death? I don't understand where this is supposed to fall. I I just, I I just don't understand why, why PD's stuff isn't being addressed. His scenario, why isn't he talked about with what's going on with these changes? How is this gonna be addressed? What about PD?
Thank you. Rick Perez. Here we follow by Michael Glickson. Please be ready.
Uh, yeah, Rick Perez, uh, PD's father. Uh, glad to be back here in person. Um, uh, let me say, but, uh, I mean, uh, you know, glad to see him gone. Um, I just, to him and Bates, I can't believe how intelligent those guys are, yet they just uh, just totally uh are ignorant about what happened to my son. How, um, I I do appreciate um, the previous members that are still sitting up here uh, being on our side with these things. Um, the investigating, the Community Police Review Commission investigation and all that was uh, you know, found in our favor, yet um, again, like uh my wife just said, um, no, no one ever talks about it. The uh, the police don't know nothing about my son. Uh, the, you know, our our work yard is um, that we've been at since the early eighties, um, is um, right next to the railroad tracks, and there's heck of suicides go on there or even accidents. And the other day, I see about uh, must have been eight Richmond police cars there. The person is deceased, and uh, but nothing was happening. Union Pacific Police were there, and but there had to be eight police, Richmond police there talking. So um, I'm listening to him talk for the longest time, and I confronted uh one of the sergeants about it. He said, uh, oh, we're doing an investigation. I said, no, you weren't. I was sitting here listening to you, and you uh, you're talking about your your kids and baseball and and Little League and stuff like that. So um, so finally, um, I said, you know, is it, is it, all police like to lie all the time? Why do you guys lie? It's it's just, it just happens too much, and and that's not even though we're, thank you.
Michael Glickson, followed by Jane Corant.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Michael Glickson. I'm a Richmond resident. Um, I just am here to um, really appreciate and acknowledge our new City Council. Um, newly empaneled, I really appreciate the work that you've been doing in the last couple of months. Uh, it's great that we're back in person. Uh, I appreciate what had to be done to enable this to happen. I also want to acknowledge that incredible report from the Public Works Department on all the trash that is picked up, and I know that it's not everything there is in the city. So I'm grateful that that happens. Um, I just, I don't have a lot to say, but I wanted to acknowledge the good work that's being done by this group. And one of the things that I think is fantastic is how um, the work that was done to restructure some public debt, so that the City of Richmond's credit rating has been improved, and that means money will be saved, and we are looking better to the financial world than we have in a long time. So thank you for that work and all the work you're gonna be doing.
Jane Corant, followed by Joe Pulio.
Very wonderful to be here in person. And again, uh, like my husband Michael, just really here to appreciate you. Um, and I want to appreciate all of those RPA-sponsored council members present and past who have done so much um in the nine years that I've lived in Richmond to improve uh life here. But we're reading all about these horrendous rail accidents. Um, apparently Ca- you know, California is up there, uh, along with the rest of the United States. They happen so frequently. And I have such a sense of relief that we don't have those coal trains going through. Um, I mean, it would be a different kind of disaster, but nonetheless, it would be a disaster. It was a disaster when they weren't crashing, um, just for those communities that live nearby. So that's just one of many great decisions that were made by this council. Um, the reversal of the misguided plans to develop affordable housing on a toxic waste dump. Um, the misguided plans to develop luxury housing on a public park at Point Mulattay. Um, this is so exciting to me. Uh, and I I further, I'm not even mentioning the reimagined public safety, which began under the former council. Um, my heart breaks for the Perez family, and I really do wish that there was some way we could reverse these kinds of things happening in our city. Um, but I have hope um, in this new council, just watching you online and the whole tenor of the conversations, the respect, the kindness that you show one another and the public is very moving, and I will conclude. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Pulio, followed by Ken Lynn.
Joe Pulio, Richmond resident. Uh, it's so good to be back in person and see all these lovely people. Uh, and then I appreciate the civil tone of the council. So remarkable, after ten years of um bare knuckle politics in Richmond. And I want to speak about trash and uh, the, my experience with it. A few years ago, I had a sofa bed that I wanted to dispose of, and it was so heavy, I had to break it into a front and back, and I put it on my trail and took it up to the dump. And he wanted to charge me for two mattresses. I said, it's one unit. I finally negotiated and got it down to forty dollars. Um, one thing you might consider is providing dump permits for Richmond residents. I don't know how much of the trash the Public Works Department picks up is local and how much is out of town dumped here, but that's something to consider. The dumpsters are really important. Uh, I and others uh volunteer at Point Mulattay once a week, and we used to have a dumpster out there. And half our job in cleaning up was people dumped around the dumpster. It became a magnet, and when Craig Murray suggested removing it, we thought that was a mistake. It was the perfect solution, because without the attraction of trash, people didn't dump. And it's the same thing with trash on the streets of Richmond. If people see a mattress on the sidewalk, they'll dump another mattress on the sidewalk. You have to keep them clean, and dumpster days or perhaps dump permits are something you consider. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ken Lynn, followed by Kathleen Wymer.
Uh, basically, this is about a police issue. And uh, I haven't seen Richard Perez since nineteen seventy-six in high school.
Please speak in the mic.
Haven't seen Richard Perez since nineteen seventy-six in high school. When I read the report, well, had happened to his son, I felt it was total bullshit, excuse my wording. My stepfather was a Berkeley cop. My dad was a Treasury agent. You're not funding the police correctly here. If you don't pay a competitive wage to the police, then you get substandard employees, just like I hire employees, have to pay current wages, treat them correctly, and do the right thing. What happened to the Perez family? When I read it in the newspaper, I didn't know what to say. So you guys control the budgets? You guys control the hiring? You guys control the type of people they're hiring? If a guy can't handle another man without shooting him, when the man doesn't have a weapon, there's something wrong. So think about the people that are hiring these people and what we're paying them. And are we paying them a livable wage where they live in the city and they're invested here? I'm sorry, Richard. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathleen Wymer, followed by Jamin Purcell.
Thank you. Kathleen Wymer, I'm a Richmond resident. I'm very happy to see this council seated and for the meetings to be open to uh in-person attendance. It's beautiful. And I'm happy to hear about all of the trash abeyment. I agree totally with what my husband Joe Pulio said. Trash begets trash, and the more effort we put into removing it, uh, the better. I also wanted to mention N seven D, which has been moved to the agenda on March twenty-first. It's about another study of what can be done to abate deterioration of some historic buildings and some that have been registered as historic buildings. And um, that it's being delayed suggests that there's going to be, you're going to give it thoughtful consideration rather than doing another study of the sort that was done ten years ago with no apparent result. So you're, it's great to have a council that's working so hard and so cooperatively for the benefit of the city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamin Purcell, and our last speaker will be Tony Tumay.
Uh, first, I would like to thank everybody uh for being here. Uh, I would like to thank the staff for being able to make this happen. Um, I really appreciate it. We have gone through what seems to be a long, dark night of the city, where we have had a lot of alienation. There's been a lot of uh separation. It has allowed for people to uh really go for some people's throats and lie and and do horrible things. Um, I'm sure we're probably gonna hear a little bit about that that later tonight. Um, but I really do think that this is, uh, when I look at the council, I'm very happy to see much of what's on the council. I'm sad that uh our mayor couldn't be here, but it is um really encouraging to see the diversity and the resiliency of this city stepping forward and being able to keep, continue to move us forward. Um, I'm also looking forward to being able to continue to have these meetings in the future and be able to have all of our community events coming back. Um, that's part of what I'm so excited about seeing the new appointments to the Arts Council, because I know that there's been a real uh uh loss of that uh community and the art and culture here in Richmond, and I hope that uh that will return. Um, one thing that I do want to kind of uh just speak out about is uh we are um, one about uh eh eh is about wood pellets. Uh, while we haven't had a trace, a a train accident happened here, and we have stopped uh coal moving through Richmond. There is a new scheme that is about wood pellets. Wood pellets are looked at as a new source of biofuel, but really, it's just another excuse to be able to do deforestation primarily in the south to be able to ship it overseas. And Ri- and a lot of that is being funnel, eh is looked at being funneled here through Richmond. I hope that we'll be uh having people looking into that, so that we can make sure that we are going to be creating good green jobs here in Richmond and ones that are going to be protecting our planet and um our future. Um, and I also want to say that um, while I'm grateful to be here, I know that there are many people who couldn't be here, and um, I want to uh really take a time to appreciate them. Go Giants.
Our last speaker is Tony Tumay.
Cool. Um, did I press something? Just start. Oh, hi, everyone. Nice to see you all. This is my first time here. Um, I just wanted to congratulate everyone for being here and thanking the staff that made everything possible. Um, online, I see a lot of people saying how, what a sense of relief they feel with our new council. I mean, the discourse is much more lighthearted, and people can disagree without calling each other's names and stuff like that. So I just, I'm here to to really um appreciate you all for doing what you do and stepping up um for your communities. Um, and the, another thing I wanted to mention is don't forget about the arts. Um, when you move forward in your policy, please think about the arts community, which um, we have one of a kind here in Richmond. Um, so please keep us all in mind. Thank you so much.
Now we'll move to the speakers that are on Zoom, and there are three speakers.
I have Mark Wasberg, Naomi Williams, and Tarnell Abbott. Mark Wasberg, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Yeah, you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I wanna, I wanna thank the City Manager's Office for uh helping me fill out the application for uh, for housing. Uh, she was a godsend. I will, first thing I went, I walked, I walked into my place, you know what to do. I had problems turning on the light switch, the water faucet, been sixteen years on the street. Second of all, McLaughlin has no fucking business being on that city council, conducting the city council meeting. That a city attorney needs to go back and look at the law. The charter says only the American conduct the city council meeting. I knew this shit was gonna fucking happen. You people just stand there and don't say nothing. You got a bunch of no-good fucking RPA members on that fucking in inside those chambers sucking their ass, and that bitch has no right doing what she's doing right now, because I'm gonna tell you something right now. Lawsuits are gonna be flying, people, and that damn fucking city attorney, I'm gonna be knocking on your fucking door. I want to know what the law says. That bitch is all termed out. She had no business having any authority whatsoever. And I don't know where you got this fucking idea that she could just sit there and conduct a fucking meeting when this psycho bitch thinks she she's another fucking Hitler. This is fucking bullshit, man. I told you, I pay worth a bunch of fucking shit. You motherfuckers go on there and praise these fucking communist bastards on the fucking city council? And plus, you got that fucking cocksucker Jamie who's wearing uh women pearls.
You're out of order. It's time to curtail your language. This is a warning.
Okay, just a second. Let me. Hey, Mark, you have thirty-one seconds left.
Yeah, that's right, McLaughlin. Go ahead and cut me off, bitch. I'll have your fucking ass in court, and I'll guarantee you won't be on that motherfucking city council.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I do want to say that this city council does not condone condone the type of language and hostility that the previous speaker put forward. He, we've given him his um free speech rights, uh, gave him a warning to curtail his language, and he did not. And so that is why he was cut off.
Okay, next speaker is Naomi Williams. Naomi, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening. Um, I'm gonna change the subject. I'm here as a member of the Neighborhood Block Association. We have the Juneteenth every year, and we have it again this year. So in June seventeenth, it's on a Saturday. In June seventeenth, it's on a Saturday. So if you would like to be involved and participate, go on the way up and go to Juneteenth. Twenty twenty-three. And sign up. For either for the parade or for the vendors. And we're gonna be over in Nichols Park. And city mayor and city council members. You, you sign up too, so I can see you out there, because I'm sure they're gonna look for you. Okay, that's all I have to say. That's good news now.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Tarnell Abbott. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, my name is Tarnell Abbott. I'm a resident of Richmond. And um. I do want to say that. Uh, with regards to the um, consent calendar items. N four A, the contract with Baker and Taylor for the library. I'm glad that somebody has finally uh, got this contract moving along. The library has not been able to purchase books since October. Because the contract was allowed to lapse. So keep moving in the right direction and thank you so much for that. Um, I also want to say that um, there's uh, technology questions I have. One is. Uh, it seems to be very hit or miss whether I can get the agenda documents to actually open. Uh, without going into an endless loop on the, the calendar that you have to go in through. So. I hope IT can uh, do something about that. I would also like them to follow up on the request from. Uh, Vice Mayor McLaughlin that was made on the February twenty-eighth Christina Hill presentation. That her presentation be posted on the city website. I tried looking for it in the environmental uh, pages and I could not find it. So please make sure that you do that. Um, I'm very grateful for the dumpster days. I use them every year. I could actually use it twice a year. And um, I think that the um. Richmond Sanitaries should be made to pay for um, bulk item pickup for multifamily dwellings. If we get, if the rest of us get to have that benefit. I don't see why multifamily ben- um, multifamily units can't have that benefit also. Um. And I hope that with the illegal dumping, I hope metal recycling is happening. Thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you. And there are no more public speakers.
Okay, uh, thank you very much um, for all the speakers during open forum and the next item, city clerk.
The next. The next item is item N, and that is the to approve the consent calendar. That excludes item N seven D.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll vote to approve the consent calendar.
I second that. Will you clerk, will you call the roll? Or call the uh, vote?
Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez is absent. The vote is. The vote is unanimous.
All right. Thank you, city clerk. Um, please, let's go on to the next item.
Next item is our public hearing. Pursuant to public notice, it's time to hold a public hearing. To adopt a resolution to approve an encroachment agreement application for private landowner fence encroachment. Into the unimproved public right-of-way at Eight Western Drive and direct staff. To enter into an encroachment agreement regarding saying to be recorded on the landowner's property title.
Okay, thank you, city clerk. Um, I just want to begin by stating the uh, format that we'll be using for this um, public hearing. We're going to use the same format that we used for the previous encroachment. Um. Public hearing, and that is first we hear from staff, then we have questions from the council. Then I will open the public hearing. Then we will give the um, the. The applicant that is seeking the encroachment eight minutes to make a statement. And if there's a principal opponent. That wants to make uh, a statement of eight minutes, they also can do so. Then we'll hear from the public speakers, which will have three minutes each. Then we'll have rebuttals from both the applicant and opponent, two minutes each. Then we'll close the public hearing and then the council will have an opportunity to ask. Um, clarifying quest, more questions to staff or technical questions to the applicants. Then we'll um, have some further discussion and a vote will happen after that. So um, with that, I think we want to hear staff's reports. So um. I think that's from Director Chavaria.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor McLaughlin. Uh, again, my name is Daniel Chavaria, the Public Works Director for the City of Richmond. With me tonight is the Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer, Robert Armijo. And our consultant, uh, Robert Stevens from the firm CSWST Two. We have asked our consultant to a, make this presentation. Robert Stevens have been uh, uh, more familiar with this specific case. And uh, we found, found that uh, it would be better to have somebody that's been involved in this project. Longer than the two of us that uh, barely have been in the city for. Four months in my case and uh, mon- two months and a half for Mr. Armijo. Robert Stevens, if, if you want to start a presentation.
Thank you, Daniel. Can everybody see the presentation on the screen?
Hmm.
Yes. Wonderful. Uh, Vice Mayor and members of the council, my name is Robert Stevens and I thank you uh, for having me this evening to speak about the encroachment. Uh, application for an encroachment agreement at Eight Western Drive. Uh, so um, we're here tonight to look uh, at this and seek an approval for the encroachment agreement. Uh, the location of this site or the home is on the left is in Point Richmond. And on the right, uh, the specific home is on Western Drive. And it's just west of Dornan Drive, right there at the tunnel that leads back to Point Richmond. You can see here, this is the subject property. Uh, you can see the home in the background and in the foreground, you can see the fence, which is the subject of tonight's discussion. Uh, this is an image looking to the west. You can see the home there on the right. It's a red home. Uh, Western Drive is a small two-lane roadway. This is an image looking to the east. Again, the home is on the left and the fence and stairs and retaining wall. Uh, is the subject of tonight's conversation. So this is an image looking at the property. You can see Eight Western Drive is here. The property is highlighted in a yellow highlight here. Belvedere Avenue is to the north of the property. Western Drive is to the south of the property here. And you can see the area that's highlighted in red. This is the uh, the subject of the encroachment agreement application. You can see there's a driveway. There's a fence, there's a staircase, and there's a series of two retaining walls. So our understanding uh, of the reason for this encroachment is uh, the homeowner was seeking access to the home. To secure vehicle parking and for a place to store trash, recycling, and green waste. Uh, this is going to be a s- a series of sections of the, of the encroachment. On the left is the plan that we were looking at before. It is a cross-section through the street as well as the property. You'll see uh, the su- the, the section we're looking at is highlighted. In this case, it's A. You can see here, this is looking towards the west. We can see the property on the right. We can see Western Drive here. It's about eighteen feet wide. And the photograph on the top. With the arrow shows the approximate location the section is taken. Here, I want to call your attention to Western Drive. It is within the public right-of-way. And you can see the highlighted property area of the Eight Western Drive, which is the limit of their property. So as we step towards the west, we can see Section B. Which is the location where the encroachment begins at the fence. Between the edge of pavement and the face of fence, there's a little less than four feet available. As we go to Section C. Which is close to where the driveway is. Again, there's about four feet from the sliding gate to the edge of pavement. And then Section D is beyond uh, the fence, right at the limit of the fence. Again, at this location, there's about six feet of, of space between the edge of pavement and the fence. This is a section that's taken farther down the street and you can see the road widens to almost nineteen feet at this location. So an encroachment agreement is uh, allowed by the Richmond Municipal Code. Chapter twelve point three zero point one eight zero. Which says that a private landowner must submit. An encroachment agreement application to the Engineering Division of Public Works. Uh, the, per the RMC, there's Section twelve point three zero point one nine zero. States that the city engineer must make findings to advance the application to city council. And then finally, the RMC states that the city council has the approval. To authorize such an application. And it's really important to recognize that once an encroachment agreement is authorized, if authorized. This is recorded against the property title and it binds successive owners in perpetuity to the conditions of the encroachment agreement. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the findings and this is um. What, when an application comes in, the engineering department's responsibility is to review consistent with the. Uh, Richmond Municipal Code. First one is, does the application contain all the necessary supporting information? And the engineering department concluded that the July sixth twenty twenty-two application made by Mr. and Ms. Ortiz was complete. The second. Is the encroachment in conflict with any adopted street improvements or similar plans or any uh, development that could be anticipated? Uh, the city has no adopted street improvements or similar plans for Western Drive. And we do not believe it conflicts with any anticipated development. Um, C, the encroachment does not pose a public health or safety hazard as determined by the city engineer. So uh, the fence is located uh, from the edge of the street. Uh, the slope is fairly steep along Western Drive. There's existing vegetation and, and boulders and rocks. Um, so it's not something that's easily driven upon, nor is it something that's easy to walk upon. But a vehicle that might be traveling west on Western Drive. Uh, we thought it prudent to add an object marker as highlighted on the edge of fence. Uh, just to, to make drivers aware at night that there is a fence there um, off the side of the road. D, the encroachment does not substantially obscure the main property frontage. Uh, this is a fairly subjective uh. Uh, finding that we need to make. But when we look at the front of the house, uh, it is a six-foot-high tall solid fence. But the home is at a much higher elevation than this from the street. So if, if you're walking or traveling by vehicle on Western Drive. Um, it, it doesn't feel that uh, this really obscures the property. Uh, you can still see the home and, and some of the front yard. E, the encroachment does not adversely impact or affect adjacent properties. And or results in facilities discordant or inconsistent with other structures placed or erected. So. Uh, this specific fence and this specific property has no neighbor across the street. It's, it's all open. So we believe that this finding can be made. Um, and you can see clearly that uh, the stairs are an encroachment and they are necessary for. Uh, the homeowner to access uh, their home from Western Drive. And then the encroachment has a sufficient setback from the street curbs or pavement edges and does not negatively impact the area's reasonable use. A standard setback should no, should be no fewer than three feet, subject to city engineers' determination at the area's condition or environment allows otherwise. So here is a section through the front of the property and uh, we're recommending that. The applicant uh, install a four-foot-wide sidewalk along the frontage here. Uh, and put a curb and gutter consistent with the city's standards. And we suspect that this would require shifting the fence and the gate back a bit to accommodate this feature. So that is a recommended. Condition of approval that we have for this application. So thank you. Uh, again, our recommendation is to adopt the resolution for the encroachment agreement. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, do we have any questions from council at this point? Um, Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and some clarification. I, I wanted to, to uh, so. Um. You are saying uh, a resolution to approve this encroachment, but there is already a fence built there. Uh, was the fence built uh, with right permit or not?
Uh, it's our understanding that the fence was built without permission. It was not built with an encroachment agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Zapata and then Councilmember Robinson.
Vice Mayor. Um. Robert, can you have a couple of questions? And I'll start off hopefully with, but it will be an easy one. I want to make sure. Uh, I received a lot of emails uh, on both sides of this conversation and I want to make sure that everyone understands what an encroachment is. Is an encroachment, the city giving away its land? Or can you explain more of what the encroachment means?
So the area that the fence and gate and stairs are built in. Are part of the public right-of-way. So they're not the private property owners um. Area. Um, so this allows the property owner. Uh, the city is giving a right or in, in allowing them to, to use this space for their benefit.
Right. And also, Robert, I don't know, you're supposed to be presenting something, but that was a picture of something else. That was. I was like, that looks like a whole different building. Uh, so I don't know if KZRT meant to present that, your presentation or not. Um, and can this property here be used for any other purpose if, if uh, the council was to say. To take the encroachment permit away, can we utilize it for anything else? Is it u- is it a usable piece of land?
Uh, this, we, uh, Daniel, Robert, and myself know of no. Other um, uses that are planned in the past for this space. Um, and I think, and maybe the city attorney could help me, but um. I guess if there was a future purpose or the city had an improvement that they wanted to do in this location. Uh, I believe this encroachment agreement could be modified. If somebody could correct me, though, I would appreciate that.
The uh. There, as was stated in the staff report, there would be a recorded agreement, so that's of title and people are aware of it. But the uh, forms that the city has used provide that it's revocable by the city. So it's uh, if there were a use to come along, which uh, the city deemed uh, a important public use. Uh, the permit could be revoked. So the installation of the improvements occurs with the knowledge. That uh, it's subject to revocation by the city.
Thank you. Um, and another city, another question here. Um. Should we use that piece of land to widen the street? And just in general, uh, uh, Western. It's a very narrow street. We're supposed to be utilizing it as an egress? But is that actually a possibility? Because then you get to the hillside right next door. There's more areas that might not be usable. So I want to make sure that if we. If this area was to, the encroachment goes away, what happens? Do we just have a, a wider area in one little section, about ten feet? And then you go back to the same? I just want to understand that area.
So if I understand the, the correction, uh, the, the question correctly, you know, if, if there was a, a future. So if I understand the correction, the question correctly, you know, if, if there was a future project that sought to widen the street and there was a project that regraded the road, installed retaining walls and, and removed trees and did all those things that would be necessary to widen that road, that would be possible. It would probably be a very expensive project. This encroachment, this fence, as I think the city attorney mentioned, if, if that was to move forward, then the property owner would be responsible for removing their fence and the, the city would move forward with the project.
Thank you. Almost done. In one of your last slides, there you showed a sidewalk. And now everyone who knows me knows I'm very big on sidewalks, but I also want to make sure the sidewalks get us to somewhere. If we put a sidewalk in the middle of, of an area, it starts and ends with dirt. Is that a positive? Is, are people really going to be able to use that area? If we were to ask the the person that is applying for it to go through that cost when we know we can't really utilize or potentially not utilize that sidewalk? Is that even safe? Because on the one side, I can see it's a hill. And then on the other side, there's big boulders and a lot of dirt. So someone who's ADA, who needs ADA access, might not necessarily be able to go up just to come right back down within a couple of feet. Can you explain that sidewalk?
Yeah, I might, I might look at it a different way. I might say that it's not unlike when you might condition a property owner that's doing a remodel on a home to build sidewalks along their frontage. The sidewalks might be discontinuous, but over time, the sidewalk is constructed. And, you know, you know, private property owners are building the sidewalk. The hurdle for the city to, to fill those gaps with, you know, grant funding or local funding is a lot less. So, you know, I kind of look at it, a little sidewalk is better than no sidewalk.
I agree. And then last, if we were to ask for that fence to be removed, the city would be responsible to maintain that area, correct?
That is my understanding.
So if there's any dumping, as we just saw earlier, that would be a potentially a prime spot there to dump. And also, if there was to be anyone that wants to build an encampment, the city just has that liability.
Correct. And we debate, and I would also say is probably another big one.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Robbins.
Okay, I have a few questions here. So there, there have been a lot of emails going around and a lot of kind of facts. So I wanted to try to clear up a few of them. And one, one thing that came up is that the encroachment takes property from other property owners. Is this correct in your assumption? Did you, did you find that this encroachment takes property from other private property owners?
From the documents that were submitted by the, the engineer of record, the only encroachment is within the public rights away of the city of Richmond and no private property owners.
Okay, so only within the public right-of-way, not any private property owners? My next, my next question is, did the application include a confirmation of the property line?
Yes, there was a submitted plat map that indicates the locations of the property line and a surveyed encroachment.
And you're saying there was one, another big thing, another thing that's being put out there is that it is unsafe and it's going to cause accidents or, you know, harm to people who want to use that way to move back and forth on Western Drive. So I have two questions on that part. Have there, do you know of any accidents? This, this fence has been there for some years now. Do you know of any accidents that have happened? And from your assessment, do you, do you think that it's unsafe?
I am unaware of any accidents that have occurred on this section of Western Drive. I would also note that their ground is very steep in this location, and there's lots of obstructions to the west or east of this fence. So it's a challenge for anybody that might be either walking or driving off the edge of the road.
Yeah, and that actually is my next set of questions that you mentioned that there are a number of obstructions to the west and east of the fence. This is in front of, to the east is just open kind of hilly hillside. But to the west is another property owner, and there are, there are obstructions to the public right-of-way there, including stairs leading to the two adjacent properties. Are those also encroachments to the public right-of-way?
It appears that properties to the west of this location have done landscaping and other elements that are there. Whether those are encroachments, I, I can't answer that question. Maybe the city attorney could help me with that.
So yeah, to the, to the west especially, it seems like in the same area of this public right-of-way, the two adjacent homeowners have added steps to their property. There's some art, there's some boulders, there's some, all kinds of things to make it pretty impossible to move in that space at all. And I, I wonder, how do we know if those are also encroachments? And, you know, if something needs to be done about that?
Certainly, there are the area, there are other properties that have encroachment permits, and also other properties that where proprietors may have installed materials on property that is, is public property. And again, those would be need to have encroachment permits to be able to legally have that place there. And if there's a property or improvements that have not been permitted, they can be removed by city, and the city could also utilize the process we used this time, which was with these improvements, when they were deemed to be illegal, illegal, we gave the proprietors the opportunity to go through the process of seeing they could get an encroachment permit. They get the permit, then they could keep them. They make the modifications required by the permit. They could get a recorded agreement that provides they could be removed. If they didn't get the approval, then they would have to remove the improvements.
Thank you. And one more kind of question on that, on that point is if, if these properties are found to have encroachments, can we ask them or, or, direct them to extend the sidewalk that's being proposed for this particular encroachment?
If the, under our ordinance, if one has to get an encroachment permit, you would go through the process and the council, and through that process can determine whether it needs to be a sidewalk or not, extend a sidewalk, et cetera.
Thank you. Just a couple more questions I have here. So there was also another question about a violation of an ordinance that having to do with neighborhood councils and being involved with the process and that they were not included in this process. Does anybody know? Do you know, city council, city?
Yeah, yes. The, we did get a letter today and we had a chance to look at it. This, this encroachment ordinance process does have a special noticing section. And under that noticing section, one of the entities to be notified is the neighborhood council. And the notice was not given in, when it should have been initially, but by the delay of this hearing and so forth, there was opportunity to give the notice. The notice was given. But it was given to the neighborhood council. There, in this instance, there is a design committee that's been appointed by the neighborhood council. So, so we don't give notice to all these other sorts of entities. The presumption is that the neighborhood council itself would inform any of its subsidiary bodies of anything that they needed to know. So we, based upon our check, the notice required by the ordinance was given. But the, the design committee might not have been informed by the neighborhood committee.
Okay. And then last question is, there's been a question of whether or not we could make a condition on, if we were to move to approve this encroachment, that there might be, you might be able to put a condition on it where it would be revoked at the time of sale. Is that legal? Could we do that?
The, the city has, I think, broad discretion under the ordinance on the conditions that it would place. There is the the provision that we can revoke this, and that's a reasonable thing because we might have some, in the future, some other use to make of the public right-of-way. That, the condition you're talking about, I think the council would have authority to limit it. You could limit it by time. You could require them to come back for more hearings for it to be reviewed. You could have a condition that says that if there are complaints, the council gets to review it again. So I think there's broad discretion to what sort of conditions that ought to relate to some public purpose, but I think there's broad authority to put conditions on the approval.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I don't see any. So we're going to open up the public hearing, and I would like to ask the applicant to, if the applicant is in the room, I guess, yes, come to the podium and you will have eight minutes to provide a, to provide your comments to the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor McGlock. It's council. My name is Alan. I will name you, so I've been working with the Ortiz family for about a year and a half on this fence permit with Anna Ortiz, her husband James, who's here tonight, and with her civil engineer, Mike Malani. You've given us eight minutes. Thank you. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. And I'll speak for about, just to let you know how the presentation will go, I'll speak for about three. And Mike Malani will speak for about three, and Anna will speak for about two, if that's the pleasure.
It's fine.
In my brief presentation, if there's anything I want to convey to you, it's that it's been such a privilege to work with Anna and James and their fam, their family. They're a wonderful, wonderful, hardworking Richmond family. And it's just been a, it's been a joy to work with you, Anna. I have submitted a legal letter to you. I hope you read it. I apologize for its length. It's about eight pages. It was required by law to reserve their rights, and that's why I sent it. But we have worked with the council on this matter. I can't, I can't recite that letter or read it in the, you know, two minutes or so I have left. But I can summarize that letter, I think, in, in three statements. One is first, Anna and James didn't do anything wrong here. They bought the property with the fence already existing. And I think the way staff couched it was, might be a little inaccurate. The fence that was existing, when they bought it, had a valid, had a permit issued by the, by your city. It also, when they bought the property, there was an encroachment agreement in place. Now, they were later revoked by your, your city, but they were in place when they bought it, when they bought their property. They haven't done anything wrong. They didn't build the fence and come and ask you for forgiveness. It was there with valid permits when they purchased the property. Secondly, your public, your Public Works Department has issued a staff report for you. It's a lengthy staff, staff report in my view, and it's very accurate. And they did that after a hundred, hundreds of hours of work. And what does it say? It recommends unequivocally in favor of the, of the fence and the encroachment agreement. And that's because it's the right thing to do, and that's what your staff decided after spending so many hours on this. And they coordinated with the planning department. They coordinated with your code enforcement in building, and unequivocally, they agreed. Third, Anna and Mike and I, your consultants, James, everybody, we agree with the staff report. We've worked with the city and we agree with it. We're here to say we agree with it. We agree with the conditions of approval as proposed. We agree with the proposed resolution. We agree with the findings. We agree with everything, and we're here to answer any questions you have. Please help us. After all this time, Anna and James deserve this permit, and we, we thank you for your consideration. We're here to answer any questions. Mike?
Adam, Chair, council members. My name is Michael Malani from the Design Firm Malanian Associates from Concord, California. It's a pleasure being here. It's been several years since I've had the pleasure of speaking in front of the council. It's nice to be here in person instead of in a Zoom meeting. It's nice to see faces. I want to concur with the Mr. Moore's letter that's, that's in your possession. We agree with all the findings and recommendations that are contained in this report. It summarizes our report that was submitted in February to the city engineer, where we did respond to the municipal code requirements to justify the findings, state the findings and observations that we saw with, with support and encroachment permit application. And we stand by those findings. We, I, I want to thank the staff for a thorough staff report. I thought it was very well done. Presentation was very well done. We concur with staff's report. We concur, we concur with the staff, with the conditions of approval. I would comment, my feeling is that in lieu of a concrete sidewalk, I think a gravel shoulder would be more in keeping with the neighborhood and would fit the rural neighborhood, rural road figure feeling that you have with that particular road that's happening right now. I'm a registered civil engineer in the state of California. I'm also a licensed land surveyor. So if there are any technical issues that you want to bring up later on, I can respond to those as need be. At this point, I'll turn the rest of the presentation over to Anna. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor McGlock. I'm a city council member. My name is Anna Ortiz. I wanted to thank you for taking the time tonight for this hearing. I also wanted to thank our attorney, Alan Moore and engineer Mike Malani for helping us navigate this lengthy and rather intimidating process. From day one, we have worked in good faith with the city and public works. As you are aware, we have done nothing wrong here. Having bought our home with an already city-approved fence and city-approved encroachment obtained by the previous owners, we have now come to you for your help. Unlike some of the houses in our neighborhood, our home is fully exposed on three sides. We soon learned how vital our fence is, given our proximity to Keller, the dumping and the unfortunate growing houses population in some of the areas surrounding it. We have empathy for those suffering. We've unfortunately had encounters with some who were mentally unstable, as evidenced by their actions, be it screaming, defecating, urinating or other things, many times just a few feet from our daughter's window. She's been through enough with the arrow that was come over our fence last year. I'm very concerned of what could happen if our fence were to move. Several police officers have told us to leave the fence at the street as it is, as it is a good crime deterrent, given we are next to the park in a rather desolate area, particularly at night. Subsequent to this, we've also experienced hate-based actions and racial slurs against us over a year. All of this attention seems to have triggered somebody or somebodies. We now find ourselves in this sad position of needing our fence to protect us from something, this very situation itself created for us. Well, it has been a challenging eighteen months. I wanted to say we have also met some truly beautiful and good people in front of you. And for that, we are very grateful. I ask folks listening to think about this for a moment. What would you do? All we did was buy a house to live peacefully and to contribute collectively in our neighborhood. We did not ask for any of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So I think the best Thank you very much. Um, so I think the best way here is to follow the procedure, which means we'll go now to the uh, if there is a, a principal opponent available, that opponent, okay, you can have eight minutes. Please come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Richard Cotts. I'm one of, uh, two uh, next door neighbors to this uh, project. Uh, the other one's Leslie Handmaker. She's over here. So, I'm the uh, principal whistleblower on all this. The only reason this is before you is because of me. In two thousand seventeen, the former owner of this property, Ben Zickelman, started to build a fence. And the fence was out in front of his house in the public right of way. All the way out to the street, Western Drive. So I went and talked to my neighbor, Ben, and I said, hey Ben, do you have a permit? And he said, yeah. And Ben's a lawyer. The lawyers aren't allowed to lock. So, if they do, they get disbarred. So I just let it go at that, two thousand seventeen. By two thousand nineteen, things looked a little different. Looked like Ben and Chloe were thinking about picking up states and selling out. And it seemed like they were actually thinking about selling their property with that fence and with that property, the public right of way as part of it. To somebody who had come along. Well, that seemed ridiculous because you can't do that. You can't, first of all, I should have known you can't build a fence in a public, in a public land. You can't sell the public lands. You can't sell the Brooklyn Bridge. You can't sell the public land, anything like that. You know that. But Ben went ahead and uh, put his property up for sale. And advertised it as if it included the land in front, including the fence and that beautiful view of the bay. And I think he got prob- well, reasonably speaking, he got at least another quarter of a million dollars for his property than he would have if he hadn't done that. Selling these people the Brooklyn Bridge, the Ortiz family. Okay, so around about that time, I went to the uh, city thinking that I sort of smelled a rat here. So I went to the city to see if Ben had a permit. And no, there was no permit. No such thing. Despite what this lawyer here says, no such, no permit. So that became a complaint. I registered a complaint with the city and it ended up on the desk of one of your staff people named John Ellen Wales. What did she do? She stonewalled. She let that complaint sit on her desk for months, maybe a year. She stonewalled to such an extent that when the city's inspect, engineering inspector Keith Lawson went over there to check it out as being a possible encroachment. She told Keith Lawson, the inspecting, the engineering inspector to back off. Can you imagine that? Telling an engineering inspector to back off? And she got away with it. I don't know if she's even still on our staff. I think she is. She never got in touch with me. She never answered the complaint. What she did do, however, was to get the city attorney at the time to make up some kind of phony agreement called encroachment agreement. We always had encroachment permits. That's well established. To make up something brand new, you know, freshly printed, freshly minted, totally invented, an encroachment agreement. Phony as a three dollar bill. And she got the city manager to sign it with Ben Zickelman behind the mayor's back. You know, the mayor's supposed to sign stuff. And the next thing you know, they've got this encroachment agreement that basically gives the land over to the owner of the property. Well, I want to tell you something about any agreement made by a city, by a public agency, by yourselves, that gives land away. It's in violation of the constitution of the state of California. Article sixteen, section six of the California State Constitution, to which you have given your oath to uphold and defend every one of you, council members, is being undermined anytime that you give anything away because Article sixteen, section six specifically says no gifts. Now, when you give for no consideration, for nothing in return, when you give a private family the exclusive use of a valuable piece of public land worth hundreds of thousands of dollars with a beautiful bay view for the rest of their life, as long as they own the property, the use of that land, that is a gift. I'm going to ask you to give me a show of hands of any of you council members who think that that is a gift. And now I'm going to ask you to raise your hand if you think that it's not a gift. How many of you think that that's not a gift? Are you going to sit there and not raise your hands? Are you going to stonewall me like John Ellen, John Ellen Wales did? Not even answer to it? Well, I'll tell you how I'm going to finish this up. And I have no idea how much time I have left. Doesn't matter. Because I only have one more thing to say to you. The very fact that you're even discussing making a gift under the color of a law that you think that you can write that undermines this beautiful California state constitution, that, that is itself a felony. But if you were to pass a resolution tonight that gifts public land, our land belongs to the people of Richmond, and you're going to give it to a private individual family, that is so against the law if you vote for it, I'm not going to quit until you're in jail.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next step in our process is to hear from the public speakers and they will have three minutes each. And then just to let you know, I've already stated this, but the applicant and the opponent will have two, a two-minute rebuttal each after the public speakers, uh, then we'll close the public hearing. Then we'll have questions to staff or technical questions to applicant. And from there, we'll discuss and vote. So, city clerk.
Okay, we have three speakers in the chambers. Leslie Handmaker, Joe Pulio, and Jamin Purcell. You'll each have three minutes. Leslie Handmaker?
Hi, thank you all for reviewing all this with us. Um, I'm asking you to please, um, let all the residents uh, of this area um, not be more at risk than we are already. Um, I've lived in the same house in Point Richmond for forty-two years. And I have four adjacent properties and all of them are affected by this decision. Uh, I'm a healthcare person. Um, I'm an optometrist, forty years in Berkeley. And uh, safety is healthcare. And that's my biggest agenda is to keep our people in our neighborhood and visitors safe. And um, and it's my highest priority. So, um, when I drive through the tunnel and turn right onto Western, I have to like lift my head up because it's labeled a blind hill. You cannot see what's coming up over that hill. People are zooming down, usually in the middle of the road in both directions. And even if I keep to the right as much as I can, um, the only place to go is that first house on the right. And, and, and I swerve. And there's no place to swerve so much with this new fence that has been built in the last few years. So, you know, they're nice people, but really, I think that it's only fair to um, not trade off one family's gain with the hundreds of people who drive that road all the time. I walk my dog a lot, right along that corner. Um, the, the road is very narrow, the blind hill, you can't see what's coming or going. Um, there's glare from sunset. Um, people are at visual risk.
Your time has expired.
Pedestrians, bicycles, wheelchairs.
Time is expired.
Okay.
Next speaker is Joe Pulio.
Joe Pulio, Richmond resident. Um, with respect to the encroachment, I recall the city attorney, uh, when dealing with one thirty E scenic saying two things. That the encroachment had to provide some public benefit. And two, that the council had the option of charging for the use of the property. Uh, I don't see any public benefit. I don't think either it's a danger. I've walked that street many times and everybody walks on the beach side because, because of sightline issues. Uh, the city approved this under prior administration. There were or not building permits. It's, it's a lawsuit waiting for the city to lose. And I think the way out of it would be for the city to grant the encroachment, but to charge on an annual basis, some amount of money. What are two enclosed or two secure parking spaces worth? Probably at least fifty dollars a spot a month, so maybe consider charging twelve hundred dollars a year for the encroachment. Thank you.
Jamin Purcell?
Well, so as per when we were looking at the previous encroachment uh, last week, uh, there was the, it was about public benefit. It was about, also about giving away a public land and what was the purpose of it. Now, um, the biggest issue here is not that they are applying for this fence, it's that the previous owner put in the fence. And likely it was to increase the property value, but the fence was erected in the early part of twenty eighteen, well before they moved in. The current residents though are being maligned by the former mayor and the current, and the community that agreed with him as to their intent or intentions or character. Um, there've been racist postings on their fence. There's been harassment of the family, um, including their child. Um, there, they've been made to feel unsafe in the home and in the neighborhood where they moved after they moved from Richmond to Richmond. There were Richmond residents that dug deeper in. And yet now they're being rejected by that community. Um, they're being treated as if they have done something criminal when all they wish to do is live within the city that they love. It was pointed out by Council, uh, Councilwoman Robinson, the neighbor actually has a similar encroachment. There are these uh, art pieces that are, uh, and boulders that take up right up to the same amount of land. And yet, they are not being brought before here. They are not being attacked or malign and they are having to, a- and then, and they are not having to deal with this. I um, I, I agree with the former speaker that a negotiation should be taking place where there is some sort of rioting of an easement with the land until sale, whether it be a, a rental of that space or whether there is some sort of uh, uh, negotiation that could be taken uh, to perhaps your title insurance uh, for having erected the fence and causing this. But this really should not be falling upon the current residents. They do not act criminally. They did not act in bad faith. They purchased a home to be able to continue to live in the city that they love. And I hope that the city council will look to find an amicable way to allow them to continue to live there. Thank you.
We have one more speaker card, but I'm not sure if this person wants to speak on this item. They did not indicate. Oscar Soriano. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move to the speakers in our own zone. There are nine speakers.
Okay, our speakers are Louise, Sarah C., Sophia Ortiz, Ron Park, Mark Wasberg, Chloe Aftel, Ben Zickerman, Joyce Lopez, and Ellie Berlin. Louise, you will have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Louise G. I am speaking in support of maintaining the encroachment permit at Eight Western Drive. As an avid walker and an admirer of Keller Beach across the street from the house in question, I've become aware of the fence and encroachment issue going on there. I am in favor of allowing the property owners to maintain this encroachment and I think it's actually a win-win for the local residents and community. There's ample room to walk in front of their house and the fence helps keep liability in that area off of the city and keeps the area looking nice. As um, I heard them mention in the staff report, it also allows for off-street parking, which is really uh, a challenge on that street and for garbage storage. Also, from what I'm understanding, maintaining the encroachment and fence would really help give the owners peace of mind, as I understand that recently there've been some unpleasant comments and controversy against them because of this entire issue, which is really a shame. What is surprising to me is the appearance of an unfair standard in this situation. When you really look around the neighborhood, it appears to me at least that almost everyone's property does encroach in some way, shape or form onto Western Drive. Is it the city's intention to challenge or make all the current encroachment holders reapply? Are other homeowners going to have to move fences or carports because of the outcome of this issue? I, I admit that I may not fully understand all of the details of what the complete issue is here, but from a reasonable person perspective, it just doesn't seem right for the city to target one property unless all the houses in the same community are going to be held to the same standard. The rules should apply to everyone. Frankly, I think the city has more important things to focus its energy on um, rather than fighting over this encroachment. The city originally approved it and if the rules change as it ha- as they do sometimes, it should have been grandfathered in. And as the previous speaker to me just said, you know, these people bought their home with all good intentions and um, good faith. So, thank you for allowing me to speak and your attention to my opinion.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah C. Sarah, you'll have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Thank you so much. My name is Sarah Cantor. I'm a resident of Richmond. Um, I have a number of questions about this. Um, the first is more of a general question about what recourse we have when people uh, put up unpermitted structures like this. Um, do we have the ability to set fines for that? How is that assessed? Uh, for this specific circumstance where the, there is a pre-existing structure that does not currently have a permit. Um, what, and they, they're applying for this encroachment. You, you mentioned, someone mentioned that there many property owners have um, been given the option to apply for an encroachment. They've been informed that there's a that there is an issue with the, being in the public right of way without a permit. What's the rule there? What's the deadline? What is the uh, consequence for not meeting that deadline? And this is an area where I think that the city has potentially an opportunity to get some, to gain some money to, and also to be tough on time in a way that people are saying that they are wanting and that uh, the way that we're talking, uh, particularly the previous speaker saying the city has more important things to be worried about, that's because this is your neighborhood and you think that it's fine and you don't want the, the city coming in and, and doing things on your neighborhood. And um, it, just the way that we talk about different neighborhoods um, in this city, this is it feels really bad. Um, I also am curious what the recourse is for getting accountability from the past owner and if agreeing to this encroachment prevents us from getting accountability in any way. I also am curious clarification. I really like the idea of charging for this and a question about the difference between the encroachment agreement versus an encroachment I really like the idea of charging for this and a question about the difference between the encroachment agreement versus an encroachment permit, a temporary versus a permanent agreement, um, and what the options are there? And then also some more clarity about what happened with the previous permit, because there were some really conflicting statements made. And so I would appreciate the, um, staff and council clearing that up if possible. Um, and I also want to say that, uh, it should be, just this, it should be fair, but we should be looking at everybody in that neighborhood. We could be looking at all of these houses. And, um, we, the owners of the house, I'm sure are lovely people. This is nothing to do with them. It's about the city enforcing what the laws are. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sophia Ortiz. You'll have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hello, City Council members. My name is Sophia Ortiz and I spoke to you last year. I'm here now asking you to please help my family. Our fence is the only thing that keeps us safe, given what we've experienced since this entire fence drama began. And to be honest, I haven't fully recovered from an arrow on being shot over a fence last year and just missing my head. I still think about it. But most importantly, we haven't done anything wrong. I came to Point Richmond feeling excited about our future and such a beautiful place in a city I love. I came here wanting to make friends and be accepted. And instead, we've been targeted by racial slurs and what feels like social injustice. I mean, the facts are straightforward. My parents bought a home and they did their due diligence. The much-needed fence surrounding their home had been approved and no one had complained about it being there for years. Same with the encroachment, it was also improved. Then we came and a decision was made to take it away and create a new ordinance. And my parents must reapply, but it was already here when they bought the house. It, it still confuses me because no one else had been approved, um, had to reapply. Only the Ortiz family did. Um, and so we're here today and I guess the decision is in your hands. And I just hope and believe that what is ethically and morally right will guide this council's decision. Um, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ron Park. Ron, you'll have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Uh, yeah, this is a Ron, Ron Park, Richmond resident. So I, I just wanted to say this whole thing is, is absolutely just ridiculous. Like, are we really spending the kind of the council's time on a fence in the point when the homeless population in Richmond is getting way out of control? Seriously, this is the priority? There is zero safety issues here. If anything, this fence keeps neighborhoods clean and orderly and actually looks really nice in comparison to the rest of the block. It prevents dumping and camping on city land. The people who complain don't even live on Western for God's sakes. I looked them up. Their address are, their addresses are listed. They're on Crest and Belvedere. I don't understand why these, why this couldn't be left alone. Now, all of us are exposed to encroachment liability. Some of us may not even know we've built things on city land. What an unnecessary can of worms to open. Cardinal rule, people, you want to be under the city's radar, not jumping up and down on it with a spotlight. You really fucking screwed us here, really screwed us. I real, I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mark Wasberg. Mark, you'll have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Yeah, you hear me?
Yes.
Look, the guy already quoted the law from the state, okay? So what's the big fucking deal? You got a corrupt bunch of people in City Hall on this encroachment crap. All right, they wrote the permits, the permits are illegal. Right? So just tear the fucking fence down and do it right. Just put it back on private property. You cannot build on, uh, on city property. You cannot do it, just like that homeless camp in El Castro. They're living on, uh, city land, which is illegal. Right? And yet the city council says that's fine, that's okay, they could break the law. Don't be surprised, the fucking city council don't give a rat's ass about no law. Just like I said, the guy quoted the law from the state. So just turn the fucking fence down and build it right on your own property. I keep telling you, people don't fucking get it. Look at the fucking law. You cannot build on fucking city property, period. No private person can do it. Or how about if I'm gonna go get a shovel and I'm gonna build a little fort right on, uh, Nevis Park? You know, you, you people, you people don't think about no fucking law and order because the city council don't give a shit about no fucking law and order. You should know that by now. Okay?
Mr. Westburg, this is a warning. You are disrupting the meeting. People are upset in the council chambers. This is a warning to curtail your language and you will be able to finish your time. If not, you will be cut off.
Okay, Mark, you have a minute and thirty-eight seconds left.
Okay, you know McGlaughlin? Fuck you, McGlaughlin, you fucking whore. Fuck you.
Please cut him off.
Okay. Next speaker is Chloe Aftel. Chloe, you'll have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I am the previous owner. And I would like to clear up a lot of things. I've sent an email to the city council members, which I hope you've had a minute to look through. But I think the most germane things to speak to, given the lack of information that people seem to have, is that the original fence that was put in was permitted. We have legal proof and Richard Katz lied when he spoke to you a moment ago. So if anyone needs verification, the council members have it, but the fence was legally permitted and left as such for two and a half years. My husband and I did not intend to move. We got pregnant by surprise and we couldn't have everyone fit in the house that we had. So we knew we had to find somewhere else to go in late twenty twenty. This was permitted in twenty seventeen. I shouldn't have to justify why we needed to move, but we thought this was our forever home and we treated it as such. When we purchased the house, we were told and shown on maps that the property, the entirety of which the fence covers, was ours. It was also the only entry point from Eight Western Drive, which is the address. The fact that this has been called into question unfairly and unjustly so many times, I'm not sure how to wrap people's minds around what has actually gone on, but that is the only entry point to our house. And the people who parked there were the people who owned the house. And we were sold the house with that being part of our property. So we went to the city and delivered plans for the fence permit. It was included and it was approved. When our neighbors submitted their complaint unknowingly to us about the fence, we then tried to get an encroachment, which was also granted. And I would like you to be aware that it costs many thousands of dollars to get that to occur, which we paid. When another speaker said that they would swerve into Western Drive's parking area to avoid oncoming traffic, that means that any car that was parked there, and there were always residential cars parked there for the people who lived on the property, would be smashed by her avoidance or whatever might be going on. But my larger point simply is this, this has been permitted. It has been heftily paid for. It has been legal, it has been sound, and it has been approved. What has gone on is a spiralless lie perpetuated by people for a reason I honestly don't understand. But it is not about a fence. It is about something else. And the only thing I can say is having watched what they have done to the people who purchased the house is a travesty. Again, Richard knew the fence was legally permitted, as did his wife Claire. The other residents knew as well, and we have legal documentation that we have supplied. We also were then granted an encroachment. And we did everything legally and up to point. And we paid for it all ourselves to avoid this kind of shenanigan. I don't know.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ben Zickerman. Ben, you'll have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Madam Chair of City Council, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, I appreciate your time. My name is Ben Zickerman. I'm Chloe Aftel's husband and a former owner of Eight Western. And as she said, uh, when we were sold the property, we were led to believe that the property line was on Western Drive, as it is the only ingress and egress to that property. In two thousand seventeen, we wanted to build a fence. We went to the city, we provided everything they wanted and everything they needed. They gave us a permit to build the fence. In the three years since then, no one came and had any concerns whatsoever. We never had any conversations with any neighbors about safety or anything else. When the initial complaint was made by, uh, Richard Katz's wife Claire, uh, it was originally anonymous and it just was about the fence being on city property. Months later, they decided it was a safety issue. I had lived on that street since two thousand thirteen. There was, and the fence was up for three years. There was no swerving. There have never been any accidents. I'm aware of no accidents that have happened since we left. It is completely safe. We also followed the exact same. Um, we also followed the, uh, when we went to the city and said, hey, you know, we have this permit, it's come to our attention, or you brought to our attention that this may be, uh, city land. They encouraged us to apply for the encroachment, which we did. And we followed the exact procedure for encroachments that have been granted, uh, and nearly a dozen properties all over the point, not including Richard's house next door. There was a procedure, it's been followed over and over again. We followed that procedure. Now, I also want to make clear that our second child that made the house too small for us wasn't even a glimmer in our eye when we built that fence. So this is not about safety. I don't know what this is about, but I will say that this has been an utter abusive process. Um, the previous encroachment was granted before the sale of the house. Mayor Butts changed the entire statutory code to take away that permit, which should invalidate all the other encroachments in the point. And yet here we are only talking about this one. Uh, as Richard mentioned, yes, I am a lawyer, uh, but I'm a criminal defense specialist. I don't know anything about real estate law and for whatever it's worth, members of the council, I don't think you guys are felons. Um, I'm not sure how we find ourselves in this place, but everything has been done right. Everything has been done pursuant to the city's, uh, directives and pursuant to statute. And this has been an utter abuse of process and of the system. And with that in mind, the, uh, the council has an opportunity to set things right here, and I hope that they do that. Oh, um, yes, and I think that it would be a bit odd to have ten feet of sidewalk. There's plenty of space to walk. People walk the middle of the street all the time. Um, I think that, that that would be a little bit strange, uh, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joyce Lopez and the last speaker will be Ellie Berlin. Joyce Lopez, you'll have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Lopez. I have been a resident of Point Richmond for over twenty-five years. I am also visually impaired and I travel with a guide dog. And I frequently travel the neighborhood of Point Ri, Point Richmond, um, as is my right to do. And I have walked Western many times and I find no problem with the fence. I do, however, find a problem with the other structures that are on that road. So if I'm walking down Western towards the tunnel, um, my guide dog is trained to follow the left margin. And if there's an oncoming car turning right from the tunnel, he will make me go further into the left. Well, as I walk down towards the tunnel, there are some boulders, wood, some metal structures with spikes. Those things are dangerous obstacles. Those things are hazardous. Um, I don't see the, anybody speaking about that, but you know, the fence is fine for me. Uh, in fact, my dog will travel the line of travel that he does on the left safely because of the fence that's there. Um, I also want to say that, uh, we're spending a lot of time talking about this fence issue when the city, that, there are so many other issues that we could discuss in our neighborhood. Uh, there's trees that have fallen, landslide, mail theft. I mean, so many other concerns that we should be focusing on, not a fence. That is perfectly fine. Um, so I'm asking the council to reconsider and allow this family, the Ortiz family, to keep hit their fence and, uh, approve the encroachment. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Ellie Berlin. You'll have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening, Council, uh, Vice Mayor McGlaughlin, public. Um, and, uh, staff, thank you for the time. I appreciate it. Just want to make sure you guys can hear me.
Yes.
Great, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Eli Berlin. I live in Point Richmond. Um, I've lived here for the last five years with my family. Um, we often ride our bikes, um, down Western Drive, heading towards Keller Beach, um, in that direction on the road. And, um, I've never had any problem with the fence that's there. Um, I've never even noticed it, in fact, until all of this came up. Um, it, uh, in no way impedes the road. Uh, it in, in no way impedes somebody from getting off of the road to avoid any traffic. Um, I also jog, um, in that area as well, early in the morning. Same, same thing, never have had an issue. It's never even come across my mind, um, that that felt like an unsafe area, um, at any time. Um, so I am definitely in favor of, uh, letting the Ortiz family, uh, keep this fence, um, and approving the, the, uh, encroachment agreement. Um, the sidewalk component, uh, seems a little excessive to me as well. Um, I do think that, you know, with a little bit of grading and some gravel, it would produce the same result. Um, I think it's a little bit, uh, uh, outlandish to assume that somebody in a wheelchair and to make it ADA compliant is going to be, um, appropriate for that area. It's just not, there's no other sidewalk anywhere else even close by. Um, if anything, it would create a hazard. Um, so, uh, again, I appreciate the time and going to yield the rest and, um, good luck making your decision tonight.
Thank you. And there are no more public speakers.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor, I think I saw one more public speaker.
Oh, really? Is there one more?
If they, if, if you saw a hand raised, it was raised after we started calling speakers.
Oh, I wasn't sure if there was still a timing on Zoom or not.
Yeah, we, we're doing Zoom also because it's not fair to the people inside.
All right, so we are, um, now through with the public speakers and the applicant will have two minutes of rebuttal, followed by the opponent having his two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor and Council, Alan Moore, again, representing the Ortiz family. Well, the Mr. Katz, the next door neighbor, indicated on the record clearly that, uh, there was no permit in twenty seventeen. Uh, there was a permit and we have it. We sent it, uh, to, uh, the city. The city attorney is aware of the permit. I have it here. It's attached as exhibit eight to my March sixth letter. It's stamped twice as approved, dated twenty seventeen. I must say, everything that the sellers, uh, indicated was absolutely true. Uh, there was a permit and there was an encroachment agreement. Mr. Katz has said clearly there was not. I think on that basis alone, you can indicate, you can decide who here is acting in good faith. With regard to Mr. Katz's statements that an encroachment agreement is a gift of public funds or public property, I'm sure your city attorney will agree that that is not true. Every city in California, every city in the United States allows an encroachment, uh, uh, agreement or an encro, encroachment permit. Our city civil engineer is here. He has done, I think, thousands of those over his career. Never has anyone ever been challenged successfully or at all on that basis. Finally, Mr. Katz has indicated that we have these obstructions, uh, in our, in the city right of way, true enough. And then we went and worked with you to get the encroachment permit and the fence permit. Mr. Katz, though, is shown on the screen earlier by the staff, uh, staff's presentation has boulders, trees, tree stumps, artwork, all kinds of improvements, uh, in the same right of way. I just don't, for the life of me, I, I've been doing this forty-three years, for the life of me, can't understand why he would point the finger at his next door neighbor when he is doing precisely the same thing. In conclusion, since, uh, he casts dispersion on, on lawyers, I'm doing this on pro bono basis for the Ortiz family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Let's, uh, go to the opponent for his two-minute rebuttal.
Hey, counselor, can we see that permit? Yeah, why don't you bring it up to let everybody see? I want to see the permit. Okay, I would like this, uh, lawyer to bring up the permit, show it to you. If there was a permit in two thousand seventeen, I'd like to see it because I asked Ben, do you have a permit? You didn't have a permit. There was no permit. Let's see the permit and then this lawyer that likes to cast all these aspersions and insinuations, we'll, we'll see. So let's see the permit.
Just so you know, your time is, is clicking, so you might want to.
And the only other thing I wanted to correct was that, um, that's a walkway. Uh, it's technically known as a walkway. Sidewalks are paved. This isn't a rigid definition, but sidewalks are paved and walkways can be sidewalks, but they don't have to be paved. All of that part of Western Drive to the east and the west of the park that has, uh, ta- been taken, arrogated by that fence is a walkway, and they're talking about boulders. That's landscaping. You ever heard of landscaping rocks? Have you heard of landscaping rocks? Anybody? No? No landscaping rocks. Come out and look at them anytime. On the west, on the eastern side, the walkway leads to Miller Knox Park. It leads directly to Miller Knox Park. The, the fence is in the, right there blocking your way to go to Miller Knox Park, the way that everybody always went to Miller Knox Park. Or that fence and their rocks are now. It's on the north side of Western Drive, leading to Miller Knox Park. This is an interesting document. I'll just leave it at that. And the last thing I'll tell you is that there was another lawyer that used to talk like this guy does. He told you.
All right, um, with that, um, I will close the public hearing. And at this time, uh, council members can ask clarifying questions to staff or technical questions to the applicant and, um, then we'll discuss where we're at and, and vote on, um, on this issue. So let me see. So first of all, I, oops, I don't, I turned to my left first, so I saw Councilmember Willis and then Councilmember, um, Jimenez.
Okay, I guess just three clarifying questions depending on the answers. So we've seen that document being flown around. The fence was permitted, staff, is that correct? In two thousand seventeen, the fence was permitted? To staff, the, the staff, please.
Calling out from the audience. Thank you.
Dave, anybody from engineering, was it permitted?
I assume engineering knows.
So, um,
Okay, I guess if it was permitted for argument's sake, because we got an email, we've had the original owners call in, we've had a lawyer basically show, and I can see the city of Richmond's approval, the seal. If it was already permitted, then why did it get revoked?
It's my understanding that, uh, when it was issued, there was a mistake made in terms of looking at the house and what was the side yard and the front yard and the backyard. And that there was a misinterpretation of the code and that the, uh, permit shouldn't have been issued, uh, because of the redetermination of the, what was the side yard.
Okay. And so was it?
And then that, so that when I came in, that determination been made. And, um, basically if somebody mistakenly issues a permit, uh, there's, there's no rights conferred by it because a, uh, a clerk, uh, by making a mistake doesn't basically change the code. So we, we at the point, at that point in time, we were actually, um, under a lawsuit uh, that had been, uh, filed on behalf of Mr. Katz and some neighbors. And, uh, so in trying to work out that lawsuit, we came to the conclusion that, uh, if we revoke the permit, but created a process. Uh, their, their objection at the time was that this kind of went up and nobody knew about it. Nobody knew how it had gotten entitled. Um, and they, they objected to the encroachment process that existed then, which, when we looked into it, had been inconsistently applied, as was stated. Sometimes it was approved, uh, uh, by the council and, and signed by the mayor, other times by the city manager. So what we decided to do was try and create a standard process. Uh, they objected to the, it going out without a notification. So we created a notice process and then we created a public hearing process. Uh, so it is, uh, some people are saying it's a big ado. Uh, it certainly has been a big ado. Doesn't ha- have to be as big a do as it has been, but the idea was to create a notice, a hearing process, and, uh, give people the opportunity to testify so that the council could hear both sides and then issue it. So in creating that new process, uh, because of the irregularities that are, were not necessarily anybody's fault, which is a mistake that was made. We, we determined to allow the current fence to remain in place until this hearing could take place, and then it would be governed by the council's judgment.
And, um, I guess, uh, through this whole process, because there's a lot of, uh, back and forth about various things being on the encroachment, and I even took a tour down there yesterday to look at the area before coming to this. Has there been like an analysis of like where folks' property lines are on Western Drive versus where the public, what belongs actually to the city and for public use? And in addition, have we made an analysis on everybody who's got permits or not, if they have things that are in the public right of way area of that?
Sorry, we did go back and, uh, look that there's something on the order of forty-eight encroachment, um, uh, permits that exist. I, I'm not sure where they all are. I don't think there's been, there has not been, and, uh, uh, going back and, uh, looking at all of those encroachments and whether they would meet current standards or not. And, uh, certainly, uh, as has been pointed out tonight, there are some encroachments out there that, uh, you know, our enforcement process has been by complaint.
Okay.
So the, we, we don't have the resources to necessarily survey and do all this. I might add, uh, I actually, uh, told, uh, Attorney Moore that, um, because he was aware of the, uh, property next door. I said, if you file a complaint, uh, we would go after that. And he said, I don't want to start a war. I'm hoping that this gets worked out, so they chose not to file a complaint. So that's, I, there are properties out there that if we received complaints, we would pursue them.
Okay. And I guess, um, just to wrap it up, I think something that would have helped me to just a little bit more was kind of dumb, but would have helped me more is just like a graph of the general, uh, area, like where did the property owner's lines start and when do all these encroachment lines that belong to the city start. So it just helps with a good determination on like, how are these encroachments being used by everybody in the adjacent neighborhood, because that's been part of the crux of the argument, but that's just like a future conversation later on down the line, if this comes up again, understanding property owner versus city of Richmond. So I'll wrap up from there. Thank you, City Attorney.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Councilmember Jimenez.
And I just want to understand, uh, because when I asked the first, eh, that if these, uh, fence wa- was built, uh, with permit, uh, the consultant told me that, um, or told us that, no, it didn't have a permit. Uh, so the, was the permit for eh, eh, to be in the encroachment or was the permit to be, to build, uh, fence on their property?
I think my understanding is that the, uh, permit was for building a fence.
Building a fence, but no, in the encroch- like, we, we don't know if it was to get the encroachment or just to build the fence on their property.
You know, I never, uh, got that, uh, clear in my own, I think, looking at it, because the issue was um, what the fence requirements would have been in a side yard versus a front yard would have been different. So possibly, well, my understanding is that the permit was issued, but there was an incorrect analysis as to what yard they were in and what the requirement would have been. So the, the first thing I saw was an analysis as to why the fence was, uh, in the wrong location.
Yeah, um, so, uh, my other, my other question is about, um, so the, there was mention about that this is a six, uh, fo- six feet tall fence. Is that the right, uh, height for a fence like this?
Like, you know, I'm not, uh, in the planning department.
Is somebody from the planning department that can answer this question or not?
So, this is, I, I was just going to make the observation that I, I think that there's, there's, there's a distinction to be made, that the city has requirements for a fence height on private property. Um, but I do not believe that those apply for a fence in the public right of way. So those six provisions that we discussed earlier are really would deem whether in an encroachment agreement for a fence is, is actually applicable here. And I think the one that talks about does the encroachment obscure the property, I think that's kind of where we, we kind of get into. You know, is a six-foot high fence applicable? Is it not applicable? Uh, that's my understanding.
Okay, and just my, my, my last, eh, there were some, uh, questions by, uh, one of the, uh, um, resident, Sarah Cantor, and I, I wondered if we had some answer for her, like, um, what is the report with, uh, with, uh, we have, when people put fences, uh, without permits? There are many property owners, uh, who can apply according to what I am hearing. And what is the rule, deadline and consequences for meeting that deadline? And what is the accountability for the past owner? Um, who actually sold this house? Um, I, 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 I agree, the, the new owner don't, they, they haven't done any wrong thing here, but they bought a house with a, a big mess. And, and sorry that you had been putting in all this uh, horrible situation. But, uh, besides that, I think what I am trying to get here is that, um, there is some regulations and, um, following that regulation is important, especially when, um, we are talking about public land and public benefit. So if you can elaborate.
Sarah, who spoke?
Yeah.
Um, so I wrote down, I, some of her questions, um, the, you know, what's the recourse when, uh, something is unpermitted and gets built? Well, um, the, the recourse is, uh, making a complaint, uh, unpermitted, uh, the city does have, uh, inspectors, uh, and, um, when things get built without proper permit, uh, the recourse is to remove them or correct them to make them legal, uh, but you have, the person has to get a permit. The consequence of, uh, uh, not meeting the requirements is that they, they can get removed. There is uh, that is a, uh, proper activity. And as I said a few moments ago, one of the issues is that, um, becoming aware of it and the way that, uh, generally the city's enforcement process is based upon complaint. We receive complaint, we look at it. Uh, if enforcement action is warranted, we take it. Uh, so there, I think there was an ask, a question about whether, uh, in our process, what's the difference between having a permit?
The people speaking in the chambers, if you want to continue your dialogue, would you please take it outside? It's just very distracting while we're trying to hear. I understand sometimes conversations are needed, but, um, we want to hear what our city attorney says. Thanks. Go ahead, please.
Uh, another question that I noted was she asked about what's there between having a permit and an agreement? So in the, um, I mean, there's been, the city's been issuing these approvals over fifty years. Uh, when originally it was started, there, there were permits that were issued. The permit permitted the encroachment and, as, you know, the permit would be a one-page document. Uh, the city, I'm not sure exactly when, but started going with the process of having an agreement. The agreement's recorded against the title. That way, anybody buying the property is going to find it of record. With the permits, if you go down and, uh, go through the city's files, you'll find permits, but the whole idea of recording an agreement is to make it, uh, more, um, more transparent and to make sure that it is, uh, something that people can recover and they would be uh, aware of in the real estate acquisition process. And also, uh, it gives us, it's, it's a longer agreement and we can deal with, for example, the revocation of these issues. Uh, the agreement is a, is a lengthier form that allows us to control the process better. So there is a difference between that. To the outsider, I, I, you know, wh- why would you use one versus the other, but there's reasons.
Thank you so much. And I just wanted to finish saying, um, I agree that, uh, city council should be, uh, focusing on other priorities than just spending a lot of time on this. Um, and, and also I, I don't see, like, for me, it's like, I don't see right now the public benefits of having that fence there. But I see also that, um, many other folks have been doing the same thing. So if we are going to say, uh, remove these or move it, um, all of others will had to also, or we, we had to have a process, um, for everybody to do that because it's public land and we, uh, the benefit of that, um, is, is part of what we are, like, we are seeking for the public benefit of our public land. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Robinson.
Um, so just want to clear up this, this question, um, just in terms of your legal opinion of whether or not an encroachment agreement or an encroachment permit is a gift.
So as, uh, was said in testimony, virtually, I, I won't say all, but, uh, all cities I've been involved with have had an encroachment process. It's not uh, uncommon that there would be some reason why uh, the city might not need a part of the public right of way and there would be a higher purpose to do something else with it. Uh, it's not a gift of public funds. Uh, I did, uh, say to the council when this was, uh, when the ordinance was being adopted and some speakers came and spoke, I think the city could charge for encroachment permits. Um, this city has not done that, and the council that adopted the ordinance, uh, including some council members that raised the issue, I made them aware of this and none of the council people suggested there should be a payment process as a part of this. So the, the gift of public funds principle is very broad. Um, you, eh, you don't have to do an appraisal and show that there's a dollar-for-dollar benefit. Uh, there has to be a, um, uh, the, it's broadly construed in terms of whether there is uh, sufficient benefit for, uh, what the city is granting.
So I, I want to follow this, this argument a little bit around encroachment. So just, I might be a misunderstanding this, but I believe that, um, all homes that in Richmond that have, let's say, a driveway.
all homes that in Richmond that have, let's say, a driveway are actually encroaching on public property. Is that correct?
Uh, well, not, it, it depends where.
If they're, if they're in the hellscape, if it, it's like, isn't that, that, if it's cutting, you know, between the house and, and the street and it's the, you know, that little strip of property there on the sidewalk. If it's, if you need to cross that, that's an encroachment, right?
Typically, um, the, um, I mean, it, it varies, obviously depending upon where the right of way line is, but your, your driveway improvement, for example, if it's in the park, if the, if the dr- if the street includes a landscaped parkway that's in the public right of way, you could have trees, landscaping, and you could have a driveway in that area. Yes.
Is that an encroachment or no?
Uh, typically, we don't require encroachment permits for that.
But it is an encroachment because it's public land.
It's within the, it's within the public right.
Right. It's within the public right and it allows people access to their homes, but it's an encroachment. They don't, the people who have that access don't actually own that, that property. It's an encroachment, right?
It is an encroachment under that word. Most, most streets, the property owner owns out to the middle of the street. But the city has an easement over that area that gives the city superior access.
So here's, I feel like there's a possibility of opening up a huge bag of worms around public access, um, that would need to be applied evenly to every person, every homeowner, every property owner in, in Richmond, right? And I feel like there, there is a lot to think about if we're thinking about, let's, let's charge these people. And then what if these people over there are doing the very same thing, you know? Um, I feel like there's a lot to think about that. If you think about all the areas in El Spronay, all the areas, you know, throughout Richmond, where there's all kinds of public access encroachment tangles. Um, the, the implications could be pretty wide. Um, that aside, it, it seems to me that the folks that previously owned the property at least had in hand what they thought was a completed fence permit and an encroachment permit. Correct? Like, they didn't make it themselves, right?
Uh, yes, I've been involved with this problem for, uh, a while. It was the first time I heard from the prior owners and I was very interested in their comments because their behavior had been characterized by others. I think in their testimony tonight, they indicated that they, uh, tried to go through the proper process.
So they believed and they had papers that said that they followed the process that they were told to follow. And they paid for it. They did all the things. There's mistakes made on the city's side, sadly. That, my last question is, you know, we're talking about, um, kind of pursuit of fairness and whatnot in that we only kind of investigate if there's a complaint. Can the city initiate investigations of encroachment?
Uh, absolutely. I mean, the council directed our resources in that direction. We would obviously carry it out.
Yeah. So we can, we can direct staff to investigate all the encroachments on Western.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bana.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. I appreciate the point Councilmember Robinson brings up. But that drive is not encroachment. The definition of encroachment is annexing something to a private property. Using the driveway does not count as encroachment. When you're using something even in in a private property to pass through, that's called easement, but it's not even an easement. It's a public right of way and you're using it too. It's not encroachment. So that's very important. I really do sympathize with the family and what they've been through. Uh, but I believe that the fence should be put back and it should not, uh, set precedent in the city by the city council that, um, public property could be encroached and be annexed to private property unless there's a public benefit to it. Especially as you know, public safety is very important to me. We need to do a study of all those streets and the wider those streets, the better for the public. Thank you.
So I would, okay, first I want to hear from Councilmembers Zepeda, then I will make a comment and then perhaps we could, um, have a motion.
Um, Mr. Alshire, a couple of questions that came up during the public comment. Can we charge a fee for utilizing, um, an encroachment?
The ordinance does not contain that provision now, but I believe, uh, it could be amended to include a provision such as that.
Without amending the ordinance, because we don't have the time, it's not agendas for today. Can we, can that, if the council wanted to move forward with such, being able to charge a, a fee?
Well, you know, I, I guess I, I think whatever program were adopted needs to apply widely. I don't think it would be, it'd be a problem to just do it with one person and not do it in all similar situations. So, um, I would, um, I, I think you could, uh, maybe put a condition in that if the city adopts into the encroachment agreement, that if the city adopted a citywide program, you reserve the right to, uh, include, um, this agreement within it.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you. That's all for my question.
Okay, thank you. I just, um, haven't made any comments thus far, but what I wanted to say is I have seen the property. I have went there on more than one occasion. Um, to me, it is not a safety problem at all. It is set back. It's set back further than some of the landscaping. When you go further down the road, I cannot see how, I mean, I, if I was a walker, would find it very, um, useful to have a, that, you know, a fence there to, um, you know, set myself aside if need be. Um, I also want to state that, um, I had heard from many of the residents in the vicinity that, uh, first of all, there, we got a petition with 50 people saying, you know, please, um, um, issue this encroachment, um, agreement or permit, um, for these folks. They have done nothing wrong and it is an improvement, et cetera. The improvement that I see and from what I've heard from residents is that prior to the fence, there was a lot of illegal dumping there. There was, um, you know, just trash strewn, strewn around, strewn around. And, um, to me, having the fence there, it makes the property look much more upkept. And, um, I don't see a safety problem at all. And so I, I think this is a reasonable way to proceed. We have this public hearing and now we take a vote and, um, I don't see a problem with, um, approving this item myself. So at this point, I would like to ask, um, for a motion.
Ms. Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, to go with the staff recommendation and to add a, um, sidewalk. And to have, uh, our attorney look into a potential fee updating our, uh, process. Uh, see if it could be retro or if it's just going forward.
All right. I will second that.
There's a clarification question I have.
Did you read it again?
Sorry. Yeah. So, uh, to approve the staff recommendation and to add the sidewalk, that was one of the options is either add or not added. And then also to have, uh, Mr. Alshire look into charging a fee as part of our process and we could bring that back in to either make a retro or, uh, just going forward whenever we adopt that new fee.
Can I add a friendly amendment or amendments to that? So if, if we're going to include, um, in this motion, the addition of a sidewalk, can we also direct staff to investigate the other properties along Western to see if a sidewalk can be extended?
Yeah.
In the encro- in the encroached area.
I accept that. I think that's part of public safety. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question about your motion? Um, are you saying to have the city attorney look into a fee for this property in particular or as a way to update our ordinance for the future?
As a way to update the ordinance and then we can figure out when we're updating it, if we want to be retro or just going forward from the date that we update the ordinance.
But your motion would include like as soon as we updated our ordinance, like automatically the Ortiz family would start paying the fee. It's just looking at an ordinance and then figuring out how we want to implement it?
Yeah.
I, I don't, excuse me, but I don't think that is what I heard from your motion. So I think what Councilmember Willis is saying is that automatic, if we do approve this, it depends on what we approve. Because if we approve it going retroactively, then it would apply to this if we approve this tonight. But if it, if we say any future encroachments will have to pay a fee, then it wouldn't apply retroactively.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Just to be clear where I'm coming from, I wasn't going to say yes if we were talking about just imposing a fee after the conversation we just had. I'm okay with the approval, okay with the research, but not just saying yes of fees. So that's the only thing I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, thank you.
I do have like one other comment I did want to say if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, to the Ortiz family, I remember the public comments from last year about the racism, the threats, uh, almost being hit in the head with an arrow. I just heard that today. The hanging of a doll was what I remembered on the outside of the fence. I'm so sorry you had to do, deal with that. Like for me, this is 2023 and the fact that you're being terrorized like that is unacceptable. Because no one should have to feel like they're moving into an area and that they're going to have things hanging off of the side of their fences, be called racial slurs and obscenities and be treated less as human. This is 2023. We're all human beings. It doesn't matter where we come from. What matters to me is whether or not if you're a decent person and did the right thing. And from what I understand, all you did was just buy a property to improve your family's life and there's nothing wrong with that. All this other stuff we're talking about right now, but I'm sorry about all the hardship you had to put up with just for buying a property in a different part of Richmond. So just wanted to say that.
All right. All right. Thank you, council members and staff and speaker and public speakers, applicant, opponent. Thank you, everyone for weighing in here. And with that, a motion is on the floor. Yes?
Yes, but I'm confused.
Okay.
Okay. So there were two, there were two aspects to this motion. And I want to know the, the final motion is the maker and the second. Is the fee, is the fee to apply to Ortiz or is it a future fee investigation?
The fee is to be, the fee is to be determined once we bring up the, uh, process. And then at that time, we can figure out if we want to do a retro or just going forward from when we update the, the.
Well, to make it apply, you'd have to put something in it now and it will be subject to it. So is it your intent? I include that or not?
So I think, I mean, I think what he's saying is to research it, the idea of, of doing a fee for an encroachment and bring it back to us. And we may say, no, thanks. We may say, okay, going forward. We may say, okay, retroactive to, you know, whatever date.
I got that part.
Okay.
But is, you're holding open the potential of covering Ortiz. I have to put that into this.
I don't think he, wait a minute.
Do we have to just say the potential? So the potential is there for Ortiz and for anybody else?
Their, their permit, when we do their permit, it has to be subject to the possibility that if the council adopts a future fee, it will apply back to them.
The possibility is there.
Yes.
You know, if the council decides to.
Include that in what now, because if I don't include it now, the ship's sailed.
Yeah. Then, uh, that's, that's.
So your intent is that there is the potential of applying it back to this.
Yes, because that, uh, when we redo the process, at that time, we can say we don't want to make it retro or we do want to make it retro. So this, if what you're saying will allow us to make it retro to them, then yes.
So the second agrees.
So the, the, I'm still confused in what you're, um, kind of trying to get, um, through, uh, on this motion, um, city attorney. Because why would we have to put something in the, um, encroachment agreement? When what we're saying, all right, this, I mean, we could do two separate motions if that would make it easier. But what we're basically saying is, as part of the motion, we approve this application, but we also, um, want you to research other, um, research what it would take to, um, universally put in this encroachment fee. Um, and then it could be determined, so if we retroactively determine, if we determine to put the fee in retroactively, there will be, there was probably someone who has an encroachment agreement back from 2020 or 2019. And they would be, um, retroactively having to give us fees as well. So why for this one application do we have to have it in the?
Because you can't necessarily retroactively adopt fees on these. Now, if you, if, when you issue the permit, it's subject to that. Then it, that was the condition on which they, it was issued. But otherwise, it's, uh, it's questionable whether you can retroactively apply a fee. So that's why I was just trying to clarify.
I see. So, um, Council, Councilmember Willis, did you want to add anything?
Councilmember Robinson. Hands up for a minute, too.
So it, it, it seems like the fair thing would be is if we're talking about retroactive, we're going to research something that applies to everybody. If it only applies to one person, that doesn't seem correct. If we don't know if we want to do this at all, it seems like we need to research it and then adjust going forward. Um, so that's just, like, comments, my comments.
So why don't, I would say let's leave that off the motion and we can talk to the city attorney separately about, um, researching this or we could bring another item to the council to say research going forward. Um, or even consider, it sounds like it, we might not be able to do retroactive, but doing retroactive for one person doesn't make sense. So.
I'm happy to, uh, look into and bring that. My second thing that I didn't know where it landed was the sidewalk. It is the, uh, the motion, as I initially heard it, included doing a sidewalk. And then, um, Dory asked her question. Is the sidewalk a part of this or not?
Yes, that is part of my motion.
Okay, everyone.
So then, so then my question is, can we add to that then directing staff to investigate the other properties along Western to see if there's an encroachment and if there is, they welcome them through this process, which could, you know, end up in the extending of the sidewalk down that.
Yeah, and I accepted that.
Okay. Uh, so we would, we would pursue, uh, looking into a sidewalk and tell you about a report back on how that might work.
Specifically investigating encroachment along that way. It, it seems visually that there is. And so, you know, can we investigate that and see where, where do people's property lines end? Who, who is encroaching? Who has a permit? Who doesn't? Do we need to send people back through that process to need to extend the sidewalk?
All right, um, Councilmember Bana.
Quickly, to avoid any possible, um, misconception about gift of public fun, I suggest to make it attractive January 1st, the fees to be paid.
So I think we left that off the motion for now. The city, uh, attorney heard an interest in researching it and he'll get back with us on it, but it's not going to be part of the motion. All right. So we have a motion and a second and I believe it's understood. All right, city, um, clerk, please call the law.
Councilmember Bana?
No.
Councilmember Hennig?
No.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zepeda? Councilmembers Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez is absent. The motion passes, the councilmember Bana and councilmember Jimenez voting no. And Mayor Martinez is out.
Okay, thank you again for everybody for weighing in on this. And at this point, we're going to move to the next item. City clerk, please read it, um, to us all.
Next item is under budget session. Item P one is to review the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three mid-year budget, which includes proposed budget adjustments, increasing general fund revenue by eight million, two hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, and expenditures by seven million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars, and increasing non-general fund revenue by four maybe, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand and seventy-five, uh, dollars, and expenditures by one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and provide direction to spam.
Thank you, city clerk, and we have our staff, um, city manager, who's going to get us started? Okay, so.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin and members of the city council. This evening, we have a draft of the mid-year budget, uh, to review with you. Uh, our goal this evening is to provide the council with an opportunity to ask questions regarding the draft mid-year budget and for staff to return in March with the final mid-year budget for adoption. This process, um, is a little bit more lengthy than we normally provide to the city council for mid-year. Um, our objective this evening, um, since we have city council districts now and new council members elected, is to make sure that the council has time to adequately review the mid-year budget and ask questions. Some of the questions have already been received in writing and we will review those this evening in, in our Q and A. And the additional questions that come forward this evening, we will respond back, uh, via email. All of this information will be posted online on the finance department website. Um, so this evening, I'm joined in person by Nikki Mastay, deputy city manager, Delmi Quare, um, finance director, Antonio Benwellis, revenue manager. And online, we have other finance, uh, staff, including, um, uh, Mubin and Jerry Chaff is also here, as well as Vernessia, um, who's been receiving your questions, who is our, uh, senior budget analyst. Next slide, please. So this evening, the presentation, we're going to go through our recommended action, background, mid-year, the, uh, general fund mid-year adjustments, three options that we've, uh, developed for the city council's consideration, non-general fund, uh, mid-year budget adjustments, pending adjustments, and also remind you of some expenditures that we have coming up, uh, that we anticipate, um, in preparation for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Next slide. So this evening, you have a unique opportunity where we have some additional revenue and additional proposed expenditures. Um, next slide. One of the primary things that we've been hearing, uh, from all of the council members is that there's concerns around the built environment. Uh, so not only in terms of trying to keep our community clean, but also adding a different additional traffic calming, paving and sidewalk repairs. And so in the options that we'll review with you this evening, um, we're strongly recommending that you consider making additional infrastructure improvements. Um, you may be aware that, um, our paving index is very low. You should be investing about thirty-four million dollars annually in paving. And, uh, at the time of the original budget adoption, it was more in the realm of about four million. So we're trying to start to get toward the plan to provide at least fifteen million dollars annually towards paving, uh, built environment improvement, sidewalks and street calming. Um, one of the primary drivers of our, um, of the staff's, uh, recommendations this evening is a byproduct of the state audit report. Um, you may recall that on November tenth, twenty twenty-two, we received correspondence from the state, um, indicating that, uh, we were to provide a draft corrective action plan, uh, for their consideration by January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we reviewed, uh, our draft report with the city council back in December, twenty twenty-two, and it was submitted on time, uh, in developing our corrective action plan with the state auditor. Our next update is due to the state auditor, uh, in advance of May tenth, twenty twenty-three. So the information that we're providing you with and, and all of the recommendations, recommendations that are coming from staff at this juncture are designed with the goal of getting the city off the state auditor's list as quickly as possible. We've made a number of positive steps in that direction. Um, and we look forward to your continued guidance and support as we work through the process with the state auditor. You may recall that there is eleven, uh, recommendations in our corrective action plan that we're currently working towards. And much of the work that we're currently doing now in terms of looking at our revenue, looking at our expenditures, um, are required in our corrective action plan. And again, are the basis for the recommendations this evening. And with that, I will turn it over to Delmi, our finance director.
Harrison of fiscal year. Can you hear me? It, it's. You just need to move it closer to your mouth.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's better.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so what you have in front of you right now is the revised budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, just last year's revenue, and also the budget adopted for twenty-two, twenty-three, just as a comparison. Last year, it was a hundred and ninety-two million and right now is two hundred and six million, which is seven point five percent, uh, higher than last year. And if we go to the next slide, and we're going to talk in detail more about the revenue. Then we have the expenditures, they're sitting there as a comparison from last year to this year. Last year, it was a hundred and ninety-five million, ninety-five point three. And then this year is two oh six, six three two, which is a change of five percent, five point eight percent. Then if we go to the next slide. Then what we have in here is, we have a pie chart that kind of tells you what the departments, the distribution of the departments for general fund only. And you can see the police department is thirty-five percent of general fund, fire department, eighteen percent of general fund, public service, fifteen percent. Then we have non-departmental thirteen percent, which is composed of, um, trampers out, vacation fee out, security and other items. Then on the next chart, then you can see those departments listed in there with their budget dollar amount and with the percentage of the general fund budget. Next slide. Then I will transfer it to Antonio and Antonio will go over the revenue for general fund in more details.
So here, we're, we're looking at the mid-year revenue through period six. So this is snapshots for the basically the first six months of the year. Again, as mentioned by, by Delmi, uh, the original appropriation of two oh six point six million was adopted back in.
Yeah, it's very hard to hear you. Yeah, he just, it's not.
We get really close, can you hear me now? Okay. Uh, so the original adopted budget was two oh six point six million. So far, we've only adjusted it by ten thousand, which was a grant received earlier this year. So the revised budget is the same, basically the same, two hundred and six point six million. Uh, through December, we've received ninety-five point six million of the budget amount. Uh, that takes us to around forty-six point two percent of the budget amount. Uh, for revenue, being close to fifty percent is good. Uh, historically, through the first six months, we're usually a little bit lower at forty-four percent. So again, for the first six months, we're trending really well. Uh, at ninety-five million dollars this year, it's about thirteen more, thirteen million dollars more, uh, than the same timeframe last year, so also good on that side. Next slide, please. Uh, for expenditures, the goal is to be under fifty percent. Uh, which, you're, we're usually right around fifty percent through December. So right now, we're at forty-four point seven percent, also trending well here. At eighty-four point nine million dollars, we're about one point three million dollars less in expenditures for the same timeframe as last year, so, so also good. And these are the revenue adjustments that we're proposing. Some items of note include an adjustment of two point five million dollar in property taxes. Uh, this stems from a couple of things, including the assessed valuation, uh, provided by the county last July was a little bit higher than what we originally forecasted, uh, primarily stemming from some sale of very large properties in Richmond that we assessed when, when it was sold. Uh, for utility users, tax is also growing by, by nine hundred thousand. Uh, actually, this is a little bit more complicated, uh, revenue stream because within it, we have different utilities. Some utilities are actually going down. For example, telecommunications and cable is going down and has been going down for several years. But, uh, gas and electricity is going up, so the net impacts an increase of nine hundred thousand. Uh, this primarily stemmed from increased usage because of the, the colder winter and higher rates charted by the utility companies. For sales tax, what we're seeing a slight increase there. That's probably tied to the local economy doing about the same, but inflation, uh, is bringing a little bit more revenue to them. Uh, for other taxes, an increase of six hundred thirteen thousand. Uh, that includes various franchise fees and other taxes, but the main item, item that's changing, uh, for us right now is the documentary transfer tax. Here, the adjustment corresponds to, uh, the updated calculation based on the Gadi fiscal policies formula. So we're correcting it therefore, transactions that happened last this year. So another, another increase here is, uh, use of money in property, an increase of seven hundred eighty-four thousand. And this is a result of higher interest rates. So the money that we have in the bank is accruing more interest than we originally forecasted. Finally, an adjustment of three million dollars in operating transfers into the general fund. Uh, the largest item is the funding from pension tax override as a result of the bond refunding that we did last summer. That's an extra three million for the city of Richmond. So total net increase we're proposing is close to eight point three million dollars in general fund mid-year revenue adjustments.
I'll go over the, uh, general fund mid-year expenditure adjustments that we're requesting. As you can see on this slide, there are a lot of adjustments. I will go through the top three. First one is one point five million dollars operating transfer out. We do have to pay off our nineteen ninety-nine bond debt from our swap bond refinance. So that's where that's going to go. Next amount is two hundred ninety-one thousand, four ninety-nine for salaries and benefits. And that's for, predominantly for the overtime for the fire academy cadets. Next is three hundred thousand for asset and capital outlay. That additional funding is to upgrade and repair the, um, security access system for, uh, city of Richmond network and operating systems. Next slide, please. On the next page, the two I'll talk about is the two million sixty-five, one eighty-one. That is for the asset and capital outlay, additional funding for street paving activities. Next is two and a half million dollars and that is a transfer out to the risk reserve towards our targeted eighty percent confidence level. For our risk management, our current level is less than sixty-five percent. Next slide, please, excuse me, the total there, seven point seven million. Here are some options for city council to consider. Option A, which you've already seen, is already embedded in the seven point seven million and seven point seven million, all of these options will cover that cost. The first option is for risk reserve at two and a half million and the citywide paving, sidewalks and traffic calming at two million sixty-five, one eighty-one. Council also can have the option B of a risk reserve of two million, two fifty, with remote meetings, boards, commissions, committees for about a million dollars. Citywide paving, sidewalks and traffic calming, one million, three fifteen, one eighty-one. Option C, risk reserve of two million, two fifty, and city council preference, two million, three fifteen, one eighty-one. Next slide, please.
So what we have in here is basically what we review in the previous slides, where you have the revised budget, we have the original budget, we have the revised budget, the two oh six, uh, point six million dollars in revenue, two oh seven in expenditures. And then we have the actuals here today, and then we have mid-year adjustments. And the mid-year adjustments on the total revenue, you have eight point two million dollars that we are increasing. And then the potential expenses that we are proposing based on those three options of seven point three. And then, then you will have the proposed mid-year budget, which is balanced by two fourteen point nine and expenses at two fourteen point nine. If we go to the next slide. I think we are, we're going to cover non-general fund revenue and expenses and Mubin is going to do that remotely.
Evening, everybody. Good evening, uh, council member and, uh, community members, uh, I hope you can hear me. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, I'm not very camera ready today, so I'm going to keep my camera off. So here is the, a non-general fund revenue adjustment, original appropriation was a hundred ninety-nine point nine million dollars. Then we had about ten million dollars adjustments, which is mainly, um, um, uh, through the budget adjustments throughout the year, uh, through December, January to December, and the revised budget as of December was two hundred and ten million dollars. Then you today, actuals were like eighty-six point five million dollars. And then, uh, four point one million dollars adjustments, uh, at the mid-year in these funding groups makes up the total of two hundred and fourteen point one, eight two million. Uh, two hundred and fourteen million and one hundred and eighty-two thousand and seven hundred dollars a total revenue budget for the non-general fund major categories. Please remember, these are just the major categories, roll-up categories for all these non-general funds. Attachment five has all the detail by individual fund and also explains what these adjustments are. So please feel free to navigate through that report. And if there are any questions, please do let us know. We will be happy to assist and answer those questions. Um, this is the same, uh, non-general fund, you know, expenditures by major categories. We had about two hundred and thirty-one, uh, million, seven hundred and six thousand and six fifty, uh, initial original budget, then transfer adjustments of seventy point four and four million dollars, uh, which is mainly, uh, for capital and other, you know, POs and grants, which will follow from last year to, to this year and also some, uh, uh, appropriation throughout the, the, the first six months of the fiscal year, which brings the total revised budget through December, three hundred and two million, one hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine, uh, dollars, and then you today expended is ninety-five million, two hundred and eleven, eight hundred and fourteen. Then, uh, incumbents of fifty-six point eight million dollars and available budget is like hundred and fifty million and ninety-five thousand, three sixty-five, which is about six, fifty percent use in total. However, individual categories have, uh, their percentage expanded listed here. However, we do encourage you to look at the, the detailed report by fund, non-general fund report by, uh, non-general fund revenues and expenditures. Attachment five to this agenda item, uh, which lists out all these, uh, funds individually and also explains the adjustments that we are proposing. Uh, so media adjustments are one point three five eight million dollars, which bring the total proposed, uh, mid-year of non-general fund budget to three hundred and three million dollars, five, three hundred and three million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And that I will be handing over to Nikki for this slide.
Thank you, thank you, Mubin. Their next slide shows the, uh, pending budget request that we actually could not really afford. The total there is thirty-one million, five hundred thousand dollars. The first is fifteen million dollars for investments in paving, in the paving index. Um, fire training center to be determined in dollar amount. Ten million dollars for library renovation. One and a half million dollars for measured use loss due to pending litigation. Five million for terminal one cleanup costs. Next slide, please. We did have some council member questions that we will go over today. First is, uh, fund balance sheets, uh, that include all the city funds. We did have an attachment that is about a hundred and seventeen pages long with all the balance sheets. Item two, transfers in and out of the general fund. As you can see, detailed eleven million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. For debt service, one point seven million, built up lighting and landscaping, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Renovate lighting, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, employment and training, seven hundred and forty-three thousand. Information, technology and equipment replacement, a hundred thousand. Department of Children and Youth, three point nine million. Richmond Housing Authority, one point two million. Department of Children and Youth, three point nine million, Richmond Housing Authority, one point two million. Pension Fund, a hundred thousand, reimagining public safety, unhoused intervention, one point three million. Reimagining public, public safety, youth works, one point nine million. Next slide please. We also had some operating transfers in to the Marina Fund, eighty-six thousand seven seventy-eight, and secured pension tax override, sixteen million four seventy-six six forty-six. Also, there's a question for, to attach historical cash flows for cost recovery funds and to update the Excel worksheet that was with that. We uh, did update those and those are attached. Item number four, list of current negative funds today. Um, for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the year-end transactions are not fully incorporated in the financials as of December twenty-two, therefore, the list of negative cash funds is not ready until the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is fully closed. How does the city calculate risk reserve and how much money does this equate to? The city hires an actuarial service consultant to calculate the risk reserve confidence levels. And we can actually check the dollar figures for you and report on them later.
And, and also we attached the, the actuarial studies of general liability and workers' comp uh, sent to the council.
Thank you, Mubin. What data is used to drive the revenues and expenditures five-year forecast and how were the projections made? Please provide actual calculations and numbers. Per the state auditor's recommendation, the city is working to bring a consultant on board to prepare the five-year forecast with multiple scenarios. Once the forecast is ready for the city council presentation, the assumptions will be presented. Staff expects to present a draft version of the city, to the city council during the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget development process. On the agenda report, it mentioned that the city adopted resolution sixty-nine, that should be O-five, on May seventeen, twenty-twenty-two. In this one, and it gives a URL. If so, can you let me know where the document is? We actually attached sixty-nine O-five to the back and that was adopted in May seventeen, two thousand five. And that shows the eighty percent confidence level for risk. Item number eight, in the description of expenditures paid five and six, these items were not explained. Can we get the detailed explanation? Number one, provisions for, for loss, cost pool, debt service, A eighty-seven cost plan and grants. Our response is provisions for insurance losses, the categories track insurance premiums such as police drone insurance and fire apparatus insurance premiums. Next is the cost pool, and you can see there is a vehicle replacement, general liability and the civic center.
Civic center rent.
Thank you, Mubin. Debt service, payments for debts and loans per the schedule, those are capital leases, principal and interest, and the debt service payments, principal, interest and subsidy. For the A eighty-seven cost plan, credit for cities overhead charged to non-general fund departments. That would be for the admin charges and there is detail there. Number nine, can you provide citywide vacancy rates, including employees currently on all types of leave? The vacancy rate using vacant positions plus absences is twenty-three point five percent. That number is derived by taking a hundred and sixty-eight leaves divided by seven hundred and fourteen budget positions. Vacant position only rate would be nineteen percent at a hundred and thirty-six vacancies divided by seven fourteen. We've also, a list of attachments are attachment one, the all fund balance sheet report. Attachment two, cost recovery funds historical data. Attachment three, actuarial studies, and attachment four, this is the resolution sixty-nine point four five. Next slide.
City manager, please.
Thank you, Mubin. So, evening. Again, we are asking the city council to review the mid-year budget. Um, I, in keeping with the charter, I did provide a draft of the staff report in advance of dissemination to the council. And we've updated the recommended action, given that the mayor is not feeling well and isn't here this evening, and to also provide the council with an opportunity to ask additional questions and receive additional information in advance of adopting the mid-year budget. I do want to though reiterate, the longer that it takes for us to adopt the mid-year budget, that does impact the timeline that staff have to deploy those resources within the current fiscal year. And so it would be helpful for us to um, come to some sort of alignment around which option, if A, B, or C is something that's amenable to the council, or if the council wants to make a new option, um, so that we can bring that back to you for your consideration uh, before the end of the month. Uh, ideally, for example, if you want to make additional investments in uh, traffic calming, street paving and sidewalk repairs, we would like to commence doing so as expeditiously as possible within the current fiscal year. Thank you, we're available to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you, city staff with the presentation. I will start and see council member Jimenez with her hand up.
Thank you so much and thank you for providing the data. Um, we, we haven't been able to look at all of that, but I had some question and some comments. Um, uh, first of all, um, and, and thank you so much for all the work that you have been doing, uh, reviewing the mid-budget, uh, the mid-year budget and for providing all this information and really a, a good presentation with clear numbers here. I have some questions uh, that I want to clarify, for clarification. First of all, how does the city staff categorize these surplus funds, one-time or ongoing funds? Like, we are talking here about a million dollar that we have a, a, addition. So how do you categorize that, that, that kind of funds? I think today what we consider ongoing because it's part of the property that says self-service. There is no one-time revenue, correct?
Yeah. One-time, ongoing, but with a high degree of variability, is how I would characterize it.
Right, none of the adjustments are based on one-time payments.
Okay, so um, we can say that like we, we categorize surplus in some ways as a, ongoing fund, right?
We're not characterizing it as a surplus because that has specific connotations to it. Um, so we're not, we're not saying that it's a surplus. We're saying that there, that Antonio does a great job of developing revenue projections. And so at mid-year, what we do is we update those projections based on the revenue that's been received, um, which have a lot of external factors that are beyond our control. So for example, the assessor, the information that we receive from that assessor has a great deal of uh, flexibility um, for the assessor's discretion. So for example, right now, what we're seeing in the real estate market is for a long period of time, it's been increasing exponentially. As we're beginning to see prices come down or plateau, that could impact the revenue that we receive for, or if there are fewer transactions. So we've had a number of large transactions in the commercial real estate market, which have significantly increased our, uh, our revenue. And so what we're saying here this evening is, is this is where we feel comfortable with the revenue at this juncture. In advance of adoption of twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we're gonna develop five-year, updated five-year forecast. And then that's when we'll have an opportunity to get into those more detailed um, Q and A around how we categorize these different uh, streams of revenue based on current uh, the, the current most updated data at that time.
Okay. Well, thank you, that was a clarification. So also, um, you talk about the state audit, um, because there, there was a question by me about showing the, the five-year forecast and the assumptions. Um, you mentioned in, in your comments that you are going to contract um, a consultant to do that. But the audit gotta uh, look at the uh, forecast. And it was the management partner forecast, is that correct?
What we said in the audit is that city staff agree that it, in present circumstances, economic downturns and recessions need to be forecasted into budgets. The city continues to use the five-year forecast as a diagnostic document to assist in informing the strategic decision-making processes, including labor negotiations and budget development. The city will work to refine its five-year forecast and incorporate all factors, global and local, impacting the city's fiscal health, including but not limited to recession, inflation, housing market, et cetera. City staff plans to bring back a refined forecast with multiple scenarios by spring twenty-twenty-three, prior to the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget development. That was our submission to the state of California and approved by the city council.
Yeah, but uh, the recommendation that the state audit did was, were based on looking at the financial stability that the city has. And in that case, also, they look at a five-year forecast made by management partners with some uh, additional information that is that provided for that forecast, is that correct?
The state auditors looked at an inordinate amount of information and they asked various staff members for information which were provided.
So was provided a forecast for the, right, right? Like, I, I just want to say yes or no.
It's not a one-to-one corollary. They, they looked at, uh, they looked at, and then they looked at, they came on site and they conducted a site visit. And um, they asked numerous questions.
Yeah, no, and, and in the state audit, it says that, that I, that they, they, they use a, a, a forecast that was provided um, um, by the city. So I just wanted um, to just kinda like that, that clarification that the state audit look at a forecast that it was provided by the staff, i- if the state audit says, says it in, in the, in the, in the document. And I'm glad that uh, we are going to be uh, doing, having a consultant to look at uh, more in detail. And maybe this project will change based on new data and new information, right? Um, because uh, one thing that like I wanted to point it out is that um, the management partner uh, did the forecast. And the forecast in early twenty-twenty-one appears that uh, they projected approximately, it was difficult to see exactly the, the numbers because it's just graphic. They projected approximately four to six million in deficit in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. The actual fund year in that year was twenty-one point three million dollars that we have in surplus. Um, so I just, I just glad that like we are discussing here the state audit and all this recommendation and the state audit based that recommendation in many themes, but one ma- major theme was the forecast that was provided. Um, and maybe these uh, with the new forecasting that we are going to do, maybe some of these things will be improved um, different, like we, we will be in a, in a different financial situation, so I, I glad to hear that. So I have a, a other question and I am going to move quickly so uh, we can, I allow other folks. Uh, and I can email some of these to you and thank you for um, making public the uh, the, the question that I had been asking. And I hope that you can make public also uh, the information that was provided to the audit in terms of the forecasting that they use and the data and how that data was calculated. Uh, so in, in item forty-seven in the attachment two, uh, you talk about encumbrances. And I, I would like to ask why the original amount was not included in the original budget? It's an, it's a, it's an encumbrance, uh, and why carried it over now? Which is kinda like two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, something like that.
Can I just, for the bit of the public order, I think it's important that the public and the council that are new realize that myself, Nikki, Delmi, Antonio, Mubin, none of us contracted with management partners. We didn't select them, we didn't advocate for that contract, that was before our time. And so we're doing the best we can with the information that's currently available and we're committed to a passive continuous improvement. And I wanna thank the council and, and the leadership for being patient with us as we have done a tremendous job working collaboratively with the council in, in achieving and adopting a balanced budget on June thirtieth, getting rid of the slots and having adequate reserves. And so I think, big picture, we've done a great job. If I could wave a magic wand and make the state audit go away, I would certainly do this because this, it takes more time than we all have. But I just wanted to make sure you're clear, we were not contracting with management partners. That's not what we chose to do. That was a previous administration and we're, we're here to move forward.
Yeah, no, and, and I'm glad that you mentioned that because, and I'm glad to hear that there is going to be a new consult, consultant and we are going to do that. Uh, my comments is not about just pointing that you did it. I just wanted to make sure that the public knows what data has been going into the state audit. So we, we, we know what we are talking about here. So thank you for doing that. But so, can you, like, I have these two, so forty-seven and forty-eight. You say two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine prior year encumbrances for legal services. Uh, why, like, my question to you is, um, if this is encumbrances, uh, what is being, what is being carried over right now?
Right now, that two hundred and ninety-five, two twenty-nine includes legal services, equipment services and professional services items. And they were created during uh, budget amendments. So usually the encumbrances from prior year really aren't totally finalized until you're somewhat through your audit. And so now we're pretty much close to being done with our prior years audits, these are the encumbrances we are bringing forward. Yeah, that are rolling over into this year, along with uh, the two thirty-nine O-eight O.
I'm sorry, so they, they are now encumbrances, it's just an item. I just, I just.
Yeah, it's like a purchase order rolling forward from prior year into this year.
Okay, and I just want to get clarifications about, you mentioned in the spend, in the expenditures uh, that uh, item seventeen, one point five million dollars. What do we have to pay these and what was this cost not included in the refinancing cost?
This is actually to pay the nineteen ninety-nine bond that we had to pay off as part of the swap. Um, during the closing, the, the um, the transaction won't pay it out of escrow. We have to pay it ourselves because we are paying off our own bond from nineteen ninety-nine.
Uh, so this is something that he had, we had already expended?
It is something that, yes, you have to, but you have to actually pay off that bond, that is part of doing the bond deal. We didn't wanna finance the debt because it's cheaper to pay the one-time payment than to roll it into the principal and then have to pay interest over the term.
So, but, but my question is about process, so this is something that um, has already been very committed and hasn't been coming to the council for approval, but we had to approve it right now because this had already been committed. I just want to understand the process of, of this money. I believe this was uh, presented to the city council like around July twenty-two, uh, we had the date before, but um, around July, when we were doing the pension obligation bond, then we came to council and it was clear that the nineteen ninety-nine bond was not going to be covered as part of the proceeds for the bond refinancing, we will have to pay and eventually we will get some cash. So that's why you can see in the revenue, you have like a two point nine million dollar in revenue that's coming extra, which kind of balanced the payment that you have to make for the nineteen ninety-nine bond. Okay, thank you so much for the clarification. And my last question is, um, you mentioned that we don't have that right information about uh, negative funds, but in the cash flow that you put out there, as today, fund ten fifty-four, which is the engineering grants, has a negative fund balance of five mil, over five million dollars. Can you explain what is happening there? Because we just, remember, we just have a big conversation about how these negatives, every year we have been paying negative funds. Uh, and we need like, and part of the state audit that he was like, that they were looking at is at this uh, part where we are just having negative funds and have to spend a, a lot of money in that. We, uh, out of the twenty-seven million surplus that we have, I believe we uh, uh, the council approved to appropriate over twelve million dollars to pay negative funds. And it was my understanding, or I don't know, that uh, we were going to deal with that, but here we are again uh, with five million dollars in negative funds.
uh, with five million dollars in negative funds in the engineering grant. So I just wanted to know what is happening so we can also start addressing that for the state audit as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the last question. Um, we have been asking similar questions of our public works director and his new team. And so we will make sure that he's able to join us and present next at the next meeting and provide an update to the council regarding the five million dollars worth of reimbursable grants that are currently pending.
Okay, um, also the journal entry that you were talking about, that twelve million dollars, that journal entry is being posted in March. So you will not see it right here on this balance sheet because it only went through December.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I understand that, but up to now, we had that and I wanted to have that conversation because we had been paying like since I got to the city council and I haven't been here for, for a lot. E- every year, we pay and we had been told, oh, this is the last part. Or, or we will fix it. And every year we had been paying. So I just like this is for the state audit as well to see how we tackle these uh, issues that we had that in part, we were um, um measured by all of this as well. So I, I have more comments, but I will stop here and I will uh, go after my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, next is Councilmember Robinson. So hopefully I have a couple of quick questions to understand the um, the options presented and the priorities that are set here. So the first one is just clarifying. Um, in option B, um, for the remote meetings piece, are you saying that this would be up and running by one twenty-three, two thousand twenty-six? Or am I misreading this? There's a June first date and then there's another date underneath. Uh, there's no page number, so. It's under option B, remote meetings. And then there's a June first date and then there's two, twenty twenty-six, one twenty-three.
Yes, I'm looking at page fourteen.
It's a mistake.
I see it on page ten, actually.
Is that what page, what page are you on?
There's no page numbers on mine.
It's on the council options chart.
Yeah, the council's, council options chart. Option B, under remote meetings for boards and commissions, there's a date that's June first. And then below that, there's another date that's one twenty-three, two tw- two thousand twenty-six. So I'm trying to understand if this is going to be accomplished by twenty twenty-six, or is that just an error?
Yeah, we think that should be June one, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay.
The goal would be to um, have it operational citywide within three months. Um, currently, we do not have, um, as you're aware, the number of staff that, for example, you don't utilize this meeting and are here for this meeting, it would be to enable to scale citywide to have uh, remote meetings.
Okay, great. And then the other question I have is, um, just want to understand better the risk reserve, um, both for me and just maybe for the public. So I have just a few questions about that. So the risk reserve um, is applied to, what is it used for exactly?
The risk reserve is for general liability and workers' compensation predominantly.
Okay, and then was, um, it seems like a high priority because it's in all options. So I just wanted to understand, is that um, determined um, by the audit recommendation?
There's an actuarial study done. And the actuarial study gives you confidence levels of what is determined for general liability and workers' compensation. So in other words, how much you're going to pay out?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I understand that. So the study determines that, but was that a, also one of the recommendations in the audit? Or no?
Our resolution actually recommends an eighty percent confidence level. Um, right now, we're only funded right around fifty-five percent and that's for anything that we want to settle within the first year.
Okay, so again, was that a part of the audit recommendations or that's just the staff recommendation?
That's from the actuarial study that we do put in for our audit. Well, actually for our budget.
And it somewhat relates to night, item number one in the in the um, corrective action plan because it says to help ensure Richmond maintains appropriate reserve levels for times of fiscal uncertainty. And it talks about making sure that we have targeted reserves and meet the GFOA uh, standards. And so part of our reserve levels is also having a risk reserve policy and adhering to those levels. So at this juncture, we're under sixty-five percent. The city's adopted policy and the corrected resolution that we provided to you uh, shows that it should be closer to eighty percent. And so what we're trying to do is adhere to the, the adopted city policies. Um, and move in that direction because ad- adhering to those policies is part of what the state is asking us to do.
Okay, and then last question on this um, is if we, if we move um, either of these amounts to the risk reserve, um, what percentage would we be at?
You'll be closer to the seventy percent for anything that may be settled within a year. But anything that's beyond a year, you're right around maybe at the seventeen percent confidence level.
I'm sorry, you said seventeen percent?
Yes, if you take a look at all the dollar figures, the actuarial said we would have to hover if everything settles.
So if every, if all the cases that are against us settle, then we'd be at seventeen percent with the addition of this money?
Correct.
And if we don't have, if we don't put that money, we'll be below seventeen percent.
Correct.
All right, and then we're currently without any of those cases settling at around fifty percent?
And that's for the first year dollars, yes.
Thank you.
So I want to follow up on that question, uh, line of questioning because I don't, didn't quite get it. So you're saying that um, we should be at eighty percent and we are only at fifteen percent currently? Is that correct?
Fifty-five.
How much?
You're right around at fifty-five percent.
Fifty-five, but then you're saying if we add this two point five million, it goes to um, it goes to seventeen percent?
No, for the first year money, you're at fifty-five, right around fifty-five percent currently. If you.
Nikki, can you take a step back and just start from the beginning and explain what the actuarial report says? And like the current, how we calculate it currently? And then if we calculated actuals? So there's a difference between the confidence level and then what you actually need to, what you would actually have in terms of cash and the ratio to cash to liabilities. So I think, I think that's what Nikki, so if you can explain it that way, that would be helpful.
Yeah, but I, when, when you explain it, please, I mean, is this seventeen percent, this fifteen percent? Or this fifty-five percent? It's all part of the confidence level, right? That's the percentage. So what I don't understand is um, how we could be adding? I mean, I get adding money to this reserve. And our confidence level goes down. That's what I need an explanation on.
Okay, we're gonna take a look at the actuarial, when the actuarial does their study. And they determine how much money you actually need in general liability or workers' compensation for any claims that you have outstanding. They take the money and they'll say, okay, for the first year, it's X amount of money. And then the rest is for long-term, anything over a year that may settle after. So they make sort of a determination based on your claims. How much is going to be, they think will settle within a year and how much after a year. So those claims that are within a year, currently the dollars you have is right around the fifty-five percent confidence level. If you add another two and a half million, you'll be up sort of near that seventy percent level.
No, see, I can't hear you. Maybe it's the mask.
You'll be up near that seventy percent level.
Seven D.
Yes, seven zero.
Okay.
And that's for any claims within one year.
In one year, one year. So you did not say seventeen at all?
Let me.
Okay, you're getting there. So sorry. I don't want to be impatient.
Step two, if you take a look at everything you would owe. General liability, workers' compensation. You're right around twelve percent, thirteen percent. Adding two and a half million, you'll only bring you up to seventeen percent. And that's if you had to settle everything at once.
Okay, okay, but we don't correct at once. All right, um, so the, I got clarity on that. So what I wanted to ask is um, so when I read these three options, I thought, given the fact that we all, each of us, I'm sure, have um, sent in requests to the um, public works director about um, citywide paving, sidewalks, traffic calming, public safety. I mean, uh, street safety is a really important thing. I thought, okay, option A sounds really good because we're putting uh, a lot of money into um, into this, into our streets and that's needed. But then, when I went down to read option B, and I saw about this um, citywide hybrid. And I know how much many of our commissioners and task force members and board members really, really want to um, do remote, you know, want to have a hybrid app, option when they meet. And so I thought, oh, well, I don't want to forego that. So um, but I also would like that bulk of money for traffic calming. Um, so I'm wondering if that one million dollars could be, could come from, I know this is a little off subject, but come from ARPA funding. And um, so that to me, if it could come from ARPA funding, um, then we could um, maybe, you know, if the rest of the council agrees, go with option A, but I don't want to wait on the hybrids. So I guess that would be a question.
We could certainly come back to council with a recommendation on how to utilize uh, ARPA funding to address um, both remote meetings and the citywide paving sidewalks and traffic calming. Uh, but I, we would, I would want to make sure that we take the time to review the regulations. Um, and then we could come up with uh, an option that enables you to move in that direction.
Got it, got it. All right, so that was my only um, question comment. Um, I'm wondering what the council wants to do at this point. Um, do we want, I know you're not asking for a lot of um direction right now because you're talking about coming back, but you would like us to at least give a sense of what option we might be considering. Is that correct?
Yes, and if there's any other additional questions, we're happy to take those uh, now or to receive those in writing. It's depending on how many additional agenda items you'd like to hear this evening.
Okay, so I see council members sort of uh, half holding their hand up. Okay. Uh, council member Menas could go next. And then, and then council member Zepeta.
Well, I will, since that hasn't talked, so I will give him and then.
Council member Zepeta first.
I'll go very quickly. Um, I had heard a while ago that we were sued because we did not have uh, ADA accessible sidewalks around Richmond. And that was a multi-year lawsuit. Um, I don't know whatever happened with it because we still don't have sidewalks everywhere. But the question to that, do we have a piece of budget set aside to uh, for that lawsuit? Because I think lawsuit.
I would rather answer the question a different way, if that's okay, because we don't want to probably talk so much about litigation right now in the open forum. Um, but I'm pretending to be the city attorney. I thought David said that. But what I would say is that there's not enough to meet the demands of uh, our community and of the requests of the council members. So to the, to the extent to which we can add additional uh, revenue there for our public works department, it would be helpful. We need, we need more funding for that.
I agree. And would you mind quantifying what a million dollars gives us towards paving sidewalks and traffic calming? Because the, between A and B is a million dollars.
Other than not enough?
That, well, yeah, we know not enough, but is that going to give us a one block? Right? Is that going to give us three blocks?
Um, what we would do is add it to the, the, the existing bucket of projects that are being um, prepared for consideration by the council and then come back to you. So for example, if there's ten million dollars worth of projects that we have in the queue, we would come back and say, okay, here's eleven point three million dollars and what that looks like. So it's just adding a little bit to the, to the bottom. And more than likely, unfortunately, one point three million dollars is really going to probably serve more as an inflation adjustment. And for contingencies, for additional things that come up during projects that haven't been anticipated. One point three million dollars isn't going to get a ton, get us a ton of that money. The, the most expeditious uh, thing we could do is really um, work on, we have a local contractor that does sidewalk repair. So we could, that can be rolled out very quickly. And then we would just do uh, the other thing that can be done quickly is to do a change order with our um, paving contractor to, to add some additional uh, area. That would be probably the, the closest way. But I would, unfortunately, our public work director is not here in person this evening. But we would defer to him to come up with recommendations to come back for city council approval.
Thank you. And my last question on the remote hybrid meetings, a million dollars, that just sounds like a lot for a camera.
It, it's not just a camera. So um,
Is it a robot?
Uh, well, no, I mean, this, in this chamber is right. Um, so a couple of things. I thought that, why can't we just do remote meetings? It seems so easy. And then I heard staff and I listened to them and they explained to me that we can do remote meetings here because it's been set up for that now, right? But in order to, um, all staff haven't been trained to the same level, nor they, do they have it in their job specification. The big technical uh, requirements to facilitate this type of meeting. So in order to comply with the Brown Act, we think it would be prudent to add more staff and IT, city clerk's office and maybe the city attorney's office. Uh, and also to provide for additional equipment in other uh, locations other than just this council chambers. Uh, so we need equipment in other rooms and we need training. So um, that's a back-of-the-envelope member um, to enable us to try, I mean, there are over ninety-four groups that we meet with. Um, not all of them have Brown Act reporting requirements, but they do have a high, we do have a high degree of community engagement in, in Richmond. And so we want to make sure that the existing staff, that we add to the existing staff if, if there's a desire to be full hybrid. We, we, I, I want to be mindful that these folks are here till midnight and, and we can't expect the same people to do that multiple days a week.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, councilman, um, council member Menas and then council member Bana. Um, and I do want to mention a couple of things before I, I said then we could do a motion, but we first have to hear public speakers. I don't know what we have. Um, and I also want to do a little time check so we know it's uh, ten thirty. And we have two more items after this. So, council member Menas.
Yeah, and I, I will tell that maybe not consider an emotion that uh, this item is information and that the, the staff can come with other things. That would be my preference. Uh, so my, my uh, question about the risk level. Uh, we, like, the city adopted a resolution in two thousand five, two thousand six uh, to go to up to eighty percent uh, risk levels. Um, my question, and maybe you don't have that right now, so you can email it to us and public, uh, publish it. But how, what has been the risk level since the resolution was adopted? That is, so is, is going to be like fifty, sixty, like, and, and for years, like, it, it will be good to know how has been, uh, how we have been doing since two thousand five with the uh, risk uh, level. And I wanted to make that comment because when we started this conversation, um, we, uh, you mentioned that there is approximately eight million dollars uh, that we are going to discuss here and make decisions about that. Uh, but the auction that are being presented here is about, is for half of that amount. Uh, you presented all these other expenditures, but in, in the, in the, in this auction for city council, you only had the four point, four mil, four point five millions. And I, I, I think like, if we want to be more accurate about what we are, what is the money that we are talking about, you have to include the whole eight plus million dollars here. And yeah, the city, you are recommending to use half of that money in, in different uh, issues that you are putting there, which I have so many question about whether these are the things that uh, is priority for city council or not. Uh, so I, I, I think like this is what I, I would like for us to know give direction today because uh, we are talking about half of the, uh, of the money. Um, and we need some more information about that. And also, um, I just wanted to, to also say that um, in these auctions, uh, uh, the city manager. in these auctions, uh, uh, the city manager mentioned the importance to uh, follow some of this, a, a stay out of recommendation. But here we are just being um, presented with one option that actually is not in the stay outed. The risk level, like the, the stay out it talks about uh, reserves. But I don't know, like, maybe I am confused and you had to point it out where they exactly talk about the risk level and how to improve it from eighty percent in, in the stay outed. Uh, and there are many other options. So for instance, the OPET, uh, or, or for instance, um, uh, the, some of the things that like, uh, the stay out says Richmond Dino made dedicated contribution to his trust fund in fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Despite accidents, it was set target by five point five million, six point five million and reporting a surplus of ten mi, ten point four millions. Um, so I think, uh, we are being presented with one option on how to address stay outed. And I think it will need to be more uh, other options. Uh, we also, they stay up, like, we are looking at, we have a big, a high vacancy rate, twenty-three percent or more, right, right now. Um, and we are in this negotiation of the class and comms. So can we prioritize some of that money uh, to make sure that we pay for this class and comms? And this is a question that we had to be deciding in terms of like priorities because uh, I think for many of us, eh, services are connected to the, the people and the staff. So if we don't have the staff, we cannot do the services. Uh, for instance, um, we just um, have the, 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 one of the, the budgets, uh, budget, uh, one of the items in, in, in today's agenda uh, was about to uh, do the renewal of the book contract that wasn't done. And pro, potentially it's because we don't have the, the ma, the staffing capacities um, that uh, requires to do that. Uh, another thing is we are talking about um, the negative fund balance and the is um, some of these are post-recovery. And yes, one of the things that um, the audit says that we need to um, do something about the feed schedule and, and to work on that. Yes, we can do that, but if we don't have the people um, doing the services, how we are going to charge, even if we had the perfect feed schedule that is going to be great. If we don't have the people doing the, the work and providing the services, how we are going to charge that. Like for instance, like the inspectors. We have, I don't know how many inspector budgetary, but we don't, we haven't filled in. And we have been being able to do all the inspections needed. So we are leaving money on the table because we are not, we, we need to address the staffing uh, eh, issue that we have. And one of the, the staffing issue is uh, being able to retain and hire. And that means that we put people at market and do uh, um, a class and come in, in implementation. We, we saw all, like, we hear all of these workers saying we need to do that. So I think it's all, and it's part of the audit, right? So I, I think like for me, and I will finish with this, is that uh, in these auctions, uh, the city council was presented with one option to how to address the stay outed. While there is ten or eleven recommendations that were part of that and some of them embedded into the narrative that the state out says. So I think I would like to see and I will ask my colleagues to weigh and, and to give more time to the staff to look at more uh, deep into what others' options uh, we have to address the state hours, just besides to uh, increase our reserve labels and many things. And by the way, our reserve right now according to um, your fund balance sheet and maybe Antonio's always is, um, the unresent balance, balance right now is over fifty-three million dollars. In, in outer, outered, uh, actual in two thousand, in twenty, twenty twenty-two, it was forty, over forty-four million dollars. Now it's fifty-three um, plus million. So um, I think uh, we, we, we have some like, at, at the last time I saw that we have, we were going to have like twenty, twenty-two point five reserve and our um, uh, ordinance or, or, or guidelines are saying that we will have from seventy percent to twenty, twenty percent reserve level. So there is, I think I stopped there. It's just like, there is more that we, we need to be presented here for us to consider what are the option. And lastly, I said, there is also a lot of things that um, priorities in city, uh, the city council had like the street safety, but also open spaces. Uh, the library to be able to open the weekends, the recreation spaces to be opens during the weekends, more youth programs. So it's a lot of that, that uh, because these conversations are so tight, we, we don't have enough time to do the analysis that we need and to get the more information. But I, I really appreciate you to put together all the questions and answer. And I appreciate you that you are, your willingness to continue this dialogue. And hopefully uh, we, with more option, we can make a, a better decision so we can get out of the stay out list. Thank you.
Can I help you, Andrew Boffling, if I may? Um, so what would be, oh, okay, I was, what would be helpful for us this evening? If that is a unilateral concern amongst the group, is if we actually take time tonight to go one by one through the general fund mid-year expenditure adjustments that are proposed and let the council ask questions and see, is it you, something you want to, like an up or down by line item? So then that way, when we come back to you with an option, it's in line with what you may think is important. At this juncture, what we're trying to do is we are trying to, if you look at the, the items, a number of them has to do with additional staffing. For example, one is we'd like to add another IT manager. We've, we've already made expenditures to add additional fire inspectors.
Can you tell us where um?
Yes, we're on page twelve. And so um, I want to make sure the council feels like you have adequate information. And so starting on page twelve, going into page thirteen, um, you'll see on page thirteen, the two bold items. Those were the ones that were the really big ticket ones where we thought, well, there, there's, there's some significant discretion. But you absolutely have discretion over all of the twelve items. I mean, all of the items on page twelve and thirteen. However, some of them you've already approved. And so they're cleanup items. So for example, you in, uh, approved the um, the fire items. And, and you asked us to make it a priority. So we've done that. We're starting our new fire academy. We're getting them the equipment that they need. And that's going to hopefully really help us significantly reduce overtime. So um, it, for the good of the order, we're happy to answer more questions, but going through these line by line and, and would be really helpful for us.
All right. I want to let council member Bana um, have her uh, comments or questions.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Vice Mayor. I just wanted to thank the staff. I do have questions and comments in the interest of time I pass.
Okay, so um, city, I'm sorry, council member, just go ahead.
Quick question, um, I think that it'll take a lot of time to go line by line through everything, but I do feel like it's helpful. Um, if you point out the things that have already been approved, because I feel like if it's already been approved, it's kind of like allocated. But if it has not already been approved, then I think.
That's, that's why we call them mid-year expenditure adjustments, because a lot of times it's new revenue coming in or revenue that the council's allocated. So we have to do a cleanup at mid-year. Um, Delmi, um, do you want to walk through the items that have already been approved?
Well, let me ask um, to see, Mubin is still available and maybe he can walk us through the list.
Uh, so for, well, in the interim, I can start. The one point five, that's, you've got almost three million coming in on the other side and this one point five offsets that. So that's a net, net increase um, there of what the, the, between the expenditure and the revenue coming in, that's actually positive. Second line item is twenty thousand three hundred and eighty. That's for code enforcement overtime. We think that's important. We'd like you to please approve it.
So that, that has already been spent? We owe that money or is it something that needs to be approved for future use?
I would, Director Velasco is not with us this evening. I would have to ask her, but in general, um, code enforcement is a high priority. And so if they're requesting overtime to, to fill the needs of the community and it's very reasonable, um, I would suggest that the council will approve it.
Um, so just, just a, just a point, um, I think for items like that, where we haven't actually allocated, like approved, like we took a vote and approved the money for the fire academy. And so that's kind of spent, but for things that we haven't done that for, it seems like those should be added to the options. So that we understand that, that they're included in, in one of these o, options, right? Like this, these lists.
Okay, we're happy to do that. This whole options process is something new um, that we're trying to develop to provide more transparency for the council. So this is not an exact science. Um, usually in previous years, mid-year budget was just approved. So we're trying to create a process that council thinks is, is good, but it's going to take us some time to fine tune it. So thank you for that feedback.
I appreciate that. But are we good to just keep moving through just the things that were already, that's already allocated?
It's moving, right?
Are you ready?
Uh, so I'm presenting this slides with the mid-year expenditure adjustments. Can you guys hear me? Can I be? Hello?
Yes, Mubin.
Yes, we can hear you, Mubin.
Okay, so, sorry, um. So yes, I mean, so how about the uh, top, the very first one, one point five million dollars? That basically is uh, an expense which has already incurred. And I don't think if there is an option that we can, you know, uh, not fund this. So I think that should be out of the options. This is something that's already done. And I think here, savings and benefits of additional budget needed for overtime for code enforcement. Here is, you know, I mean, council definitely can say ye or nee. So any comments?
Keep going, Mubin.
And then there is professional services from Mark forty-three Fire Cat upgrade. That's again, uh, uh, a fire department's upgrade that's much needed. And then uh, Fire Academy, which has already been approved. And then um, um, of other operating and personal protection equipment for firefighters. That again is part of the Fire, uh, Fire Academy. And then um, an office specialist uh, for community services department. So that's again, you know, a, a community services area, staffing cost. And then also this uh, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar again for Booker T. Anderson Community Center.
So, so I just want to pause a little second because we're still not being clear about what's been voted on and already approved and what is something that we could make a decision on. And I, I think we're not looking for just like reading through each item, but actually saying, you know, this is already, this has already been approved, funds are.
I, I would say like, uh, in this whole list, I'm, I, I'm, I, I'm not confirmed hundred percent, but I believe the Fire Academy would be the one which is already approved by the city council. And uh, yeah, so that may be the, 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 the one that, you know, that uh, is already approved. This is just a cleanup, you know, item. And also like one point five million dollars on top, which is already expended, which we need to clean up.
Mm-hmm. So those two, but the rest of them are recommendations?
Yes, yes. And then uh, again, the explanation, the descriptions are given here. And it will really be, at the end of the day, it's, it's, that's what city manager explained, uh, council's uh, role in this whole thing is there. So we're happy to.
It, it would be great to, just like we explained, it's part of this process where we're trying to make everything more clear just to, to move these items that have not already been voted on by council to one of the options. So we can clearly see that those are, that's a point where we can make a decision, a decision.
So in addition to the Fire Academy, um, issue of two hundred and ninety-one thousand.
And twelve, and twelve thousand fifty-eight, I believe.
And what I'm having trouble understanding.
The, the item just below that, twelve thousand fifty-eight.
Uh-huh.
That one is also part of our, Fire Academy.
So that was, that was also approved.
Uh-huh.
So only those two items and then the remainder have not. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, the item above that too, for the fire department, two hundred forty-one thousand five hundred fifty for the cat upgrade because um, the fire marshal was injured. I think it didn't go through, but it was already considered.
Which is that?
A third one, two hundred forty thousand and five hundred fifty for uh, softer upgrade for the fire department.
So that has not been approved yet? Okay. But that has been approved.
Yes.
And we voted on it?
We voted.
I don't, I don't think we voted on that one. I think that was recommended as a needed thing.
Um, I think it was a part of the whole upgrade for the fire department. We decided, but it, the item was overlooked. And it says costs were inadvertently not included in the original budget.
All right. So um, I don't know, staff will have to determine that, was it actually voted on or meant to be voted on or left out or whatever. Um, but can we just, um, when you come back, if this is good with the rest of the council, um, have the remaining um, items included in the options? Um, and we can, you know, we can be ready to um.
Can I?
Can I add something like, um, so you mentioned like, for instance, the risks, uh, to put two point five million dollar into the risk uh, level, um, to jump it up to eighty, eighty percent. Um, we um, based, maybe based on the information, we can find out that we had been in a fifty or sixty functioning. Um, so options about not going to eighty percent, but like saying, in this year, we will go to seventy percent or something like that. So it's not like a big jump just from one year to another, but had a plan on how to get there as well. So we can have uh, and other options about um, uh, that we want to consider in terms of uh, what we can do eh, with the stay out.
Thank you. So I have a question about, and then council member Sabater. So are some of these projects or um, expenditures something that the council contemplated in the initial um, fiscal year budget?
There are things that, so when we get to the point of actually making an expenditure adjustment to the council, that means that staffing is a very high priority. It means that the department head has act, has made a justification for it. Um, so in this case, whether it's the IT department or the fire department or public works, um, it, or community services, the department head has made clear, rational requests for why they think it's important to enable the city to operate in a more um, fiscally sound and technically advanced environment. At this juncture, our infrastructure, not only physically, but our IT infrastructure needs significant upgrades. And so a lot of what you're seeing in this, in this, in these recommendations is to move us to have a higher utilization of technology and to also uh, enable staff to be uh, that have gone through the proper procedures with HR to be promoted. And so really, um, what we're trying to do is follow the, the standard operating procedures of the city. And if the council um, wants to get into the fine grain details about three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, we're happy to do that. But we, we thought that focusing on the big bucket, about four point five million was, was probably where you were likely going to want to focus. So that way we give uh, the department heads and the city leadership and their respective teams uh, a chance to understand that if they go through the mid-year process or they go through the budget process, they make recommendations that the council uh, supports staff and the recommendations that come forward from staff as well. So that way it's more of a collaborative partnership uh, in trying to address many of our pressing needs in our community.
Okay, so um, I don't know if anybody is ready to um, make a statement yet about which option. I already shared that I, I'm very interested in having as much as possible for street safety. Um, but is, you know, and also interested in these hybrid meetings, you know, whether through ARPA or whatever. But um, since council wants to look, since at least a couple of members are very um, clear that they want to have these other. Have these other issues or these other expenditures. Um, addressed by the council, perhaps when you come back. And I hear what you're saying, city manager, and I think it's a, a good point. Um, we always, our budgets are always, you know, based on, um. Recommendations from the, uh, staff, you know, each department makes their recommendations as to what they need. We can modify whatever, but we have to hear from staff, um. In terms of the directors of each department to know what is needed in their department. So here it is midyear budget and we're getting some more, um, input from staff as to what is needed. So perhaps, um, when you come back, you can, um. Categorize it in such a way that it's like, these six expenditures are from IT. Requesting a need, uh, and, you know, expressing themselves, um, as needing this. Um, at this point in time, this is from, you know, public works, this is from whatever. So we can then realize that these are, you know. Expenditures that have been recommended, and if we don't agree with one or another, or we wanna modify it, well, how about a little less here? We can do that, I know it's gonna take a lot of time, I understand, uh, city manager, why you wanted us to go through them. Right now, so at the next meeting, we don't have this long drawn out, um, discussion on some of these, these smaller, um. Situations, but if you, there are smaller expenditures, but if you categorize them in, um.
By department?
By department, it might help us and realize what is needed. And so that would be my recommendation, that we hold off and that you come back with a little categorization. And, um, that we adopt the options then, or the, the one option that we would want and, um. I think you did get some input, um, through this process, so maybe you have a little bit of understanding. Of what the council would like, so, um, I know.
Would it be helpful, uh, go ahead, for the council to have a, uh, sorry, Madam President, would it be helpful for the city council to have a special meeting next Tuesday? So we can try to finish midyear?
I should. You know, I, I personally do not want to have another special meeting. But I don't know what, because it go, we go from meeting to meeting to meeting to meeting. If we don't have that one meeting in between, that's off, so staff and those of us and the council. Can really catch up on things and not be always reviewing items for the next city council meeting. So may, if you could just make it as compact for us as possible, and again, if council members have questions. Ahead of time, um, I know that occurs, um, but to try and get them answered ahead of time. So that when we reach this meeting, we could get, um, we could get right down to breast tax as to what do we want? To utilize this, I realize there's almost eight million dollars, but, but most of them are small amounts in the first. In the ha, in the other four million that you haven't put into an option yet. So maybe we can get that carried out pretty quickly, do we wanna add to the options? With some other of the, these expenditures? Or do we wanna stick with the options as you have laid out at this point? I mean, that's, that's what I can come up with, um. I know, um, in the past, you're right, uh, city manager, that we did not go through all this rigmarole. In, um, midyear budget, the city staff, um, if there was some adjustments to be made, made them. Um, and, um, then it was brought to the council for, for support, I mean, I guess for a vote. Um, and then we're right on to the next year's budget, because that comes up very, very quickly. So, um, I appreciate you're giving us all these options and giving us all this time to, um. Examine it through this meeting, but, um, I think we'll need another meeting. And maybe we can put it as, um, a first item.
Okay, we will be prepared for the, uh, meeting on the twenty-first and, um. For the strategic, uh, planning item, did you all wanna take that up or complete?
This evening?
Strategic planning?
Yeah, go ahead, councilmembers.
I, yes, one of the first, uh, and we're able to add, and, and, and thank you for putting this together, great. And where would I put it? Any items that have any revenue that can. Some of you are revenue generating, so we're having a hard time hearing councilmember.
Mubin, we couldn't hear you.
Uh, uh, I was saying like, we couldn't hear online, you know, uh, what councilmembers have had, I was saying.
Councilmembers of Peta, can you turn your mic on, because then they couldn't hear you on Zoom.
I was like, I can't hear you, sorry about that, Mubin. I was saying if we can add a revenue, um, uh, line item. Or, or, or section to the, uh, page twelve, for example, twelve and thirteen, because some of these are revenue generating items. Um, so if they are generating some revenue, we can kinda keep that into mind. Either helps us prioritize, or just knowing that we're putting some money in, but we're also getting some money out.
Through the recent emergencies, how we need to update our infrastructure, so we'll categorize these by department. Or put interdepartmental or citywide, and we'll, um, we'll, we'll make it, uh, clear for the city council. So that you can make an informed recommendation for decision.
Attachment two is listed, those items by department.
So, it's good, so, so hopefully. We'll get it all in front of us and, in the staff report when you come back, that will be helpful. Alright.
And also for the council's information, um, a general fund, you know, general fund expenditure and revenues by department has. All these adjustments, you know, incorporated in each department where they belong, so. That report is well, very detailed and has all the information, that explanation what these adjustments are.
Okay, okay, councilmember Willis.
Just before it becomes eleven, I was curious if there were any public speakers in the audience or on Zoom.
We have one public speaker in the audience, and we have two hands, um, that are on Zoom.
Um.
Yes.
Would it be appropriate just to make a motion to extend the meeting till after the public speakers?
I think so, if we want to move it beyond that, we could always make another motion.
Yeah, well, yeah, I just wanted to make a motion that we. Basically finish up this item and hear from the public speakers before we adjourn.
Okay, so a second.
I say, Condi.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Councilmember Bana? I'm s- sorry. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez, so that's, vote is unanimous.
Okay, let's hear from the speakers.
Uh, the speaker's Oscar Soriano.
Hello, good evening, uh, councilmembers, my name is Oscar Soriano. And I wanna say, I wanna first say thank you for having me speak here, having my voice heard on this item. Um, I'd like to start out by saying, you know, I support, but also oppose like increased revenue. Um, first, my reasoning for supporting an increased revenue is like, you know, we can. Obviously allocate these funds for public essentials, better roads, housing for the unhoused. Maybe build more buildings for people who wanna start business here in Richmond. If the revenue does increase more, will the citizens of Richmond see their tax money being spent wisely? So far, I've seen action taken with funding here in Richmond towards a public transportation platform. Which the mayor strongly supports, it's, for, for those that don't know, it's called, uh, Richmond Moves. It's like Uber, but for the city of Richmond, which only costs about two dollars and free for students and seniors. It also serves the most underrepresented areas, that fa, so far, that's the most improved, um, funding I've seen in Richmond. Recently. Um, with this item, Richmond has, has a lot of potential to expand resources for the coming years. If we can achieve the many things we can build with the increased funding, we can attract many people from other cities to seek opportunities here. Richmond may not be affluent and have the same population density as San Francisco. But we do have a chance to be up there in competition with San Francisco. We want the citizens to trust the city government and the city government to trust its citizens. And why I partly oppose it, while many residents, especially low income people of color like me, can't keep up to pay additional expenses. And it just adds more stress to us, possibly forcing us to work more overtime just to afford the expenses. And I'd like to say, uh, just thank you, thank you for having me speak here, and that's all.
Okay, we have two hands on, um, our Zoom.
Okay, I have, I have Tarnell Abbott and Mark Wassberg. Tarnell Abbott, you'll have two minutes to speak, you can go ahead and start.
Good evening, um, Tarnell Abbott, Richmond resident, uh, homeowner. And I also want to let you know that I am a librarian with a master's degree from the University of California at Berkeley. And I have about thirty years of service in different libraries, including twenty-two at the Richmond Public Library. You do not have a library director currently, therefore there is nobody who is advocating for the library. You are running a very understaffed library, you can't even be open on the weekend. So, uh, please make sure that you do something about that. In the, uh, budget document of the, uh, multi-year, um, positions. There is under community services, employment and training, a position called library and community services director. And under the community services library, you've got, uh, deputy director, community services library. So that's a, a duplication and a confusion. I would like you to make sure that you hire a professional librarian with experience to be in the position of the library director. Um, it also does not show any of the part-time staff that were let go. Once COVID hit and the library was shut down unilaterally without even considering what people could need or what, what could be done. You can't run the library on the staff that you've got there, you rely heavily on part-timers to run the library, you always have. I wish they were full-time, but they're not even listed in the multi-year, um, comparison, so. This city deserves a good library, we used to be a great library, and now we're not, we're barely there. So do what you can to get the library back up and running in a reasonable way, which includes Saturday hours. So working people can access their public library, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Wassberg, you'll have two minutes to speak, you can go ahead and start.
Yeah, you hear me?
Yes.
Let's go back about seven, eight years ago, when the city council conned the people out of this road tax. Uh, they said that, uh, visitors are gonna pay more money in taxes. And people living here for twenty years are gonna pay less, that was the biggest con game that, that the city ever did. And the people were so stupid, they fell for it, and they passed it, it was the road tax. You got money in there, you just wanna raise another road tax again. You know, this is how dumb, this is how dumb people are in Richmond. It was a con game, it barely passed, but it passed. And, uh, Jim Roger was behind the whole entire thing. Now you're gonna tell me that somebody lives here for, uh, has been living here for twenty, thirty years, or gonna pay less taxes? When this visitors come in here and they're gonna spend about a couple hundred dollars for, for two, three days? What a, you know? This is the biggest con game ever, man. The Ri- Richmond does not have a bank, they never did have a bank, their bank is called the federal government and the state. You got people in Alaska, Kentucky, Oklahoma paying for Richmond, and we're doing the same thing there. I mean, this is, this is nothing but a big con game, you people ain't fully nobody. Cause sooner or later, people's gonna get, get wind of this, and they're gonna know that you're just a bunch of con artists, face it. It's a proven fact. Cause Richmond does not have the bank, I wanna know where the bank is at, what address is the bank is at? Cause one guy says Richmond has a bank, well, I wanna know where it's at, gotta be somewhere, right? Mechanics Bank, is it there? I mean, you know, you guys ain't gonna get away with this crap, man, cause people are gonna realize. And wake up, you're putting tax upon a tax upon a tax, you're.
Your time has expired, there are no more public speakers.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor McLaughlin, so to close out this item for, um, as staff stated, um, in attachment to of the staff, uh, to the staff report. All of the proposed, uh, expenditures and revenue are listed by department. Would be really helpful if, if individually the council members will, uh, email, uh, Vernessia. Uh, she's the person who you have been sending your questions to thus far. And CC, myself and others here, and let us know if you have any specific questions regarding any of the line items, or if you actually oppose them. If you're like, absolutely no way, I don't, line item twenty-five or line item thirty-four doesn't seem rational to me. Um, so then we can see if, uh, there's any consensus or patterns. And that will help, uh, inform what we bring back to you, so if you can provide us, uh, that information by Friday, that would be extraordinarily helpful.
Okay, and it's in appendant?
It's in attachment two.
Attachment.
It's by, uh, all of the information we reviewed to you, with you this evening, and the PowerPoint is also an attachment to by department. Uh, as you've requested, um, and so, again, if you can kindly email, uh, us, uh, directed to Vernessia, our senior budget analyst. If you object to any of the line items, because they're actually numbered. And let us know if you have any further questions regarding any of the line items, that way when we come back to you with recommendations. We, we can use that information to inform the recommendations.
I'm sorry, which line?
It's in item attachment.
Attachment two, and I would be happy to show anyone if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, but before we do that, one, one thing that I think that we asking you to do is that, um. We can have this information department by department, so we know.
What's an attachment to in your package?
Yes, and then, so.
It's provided.
So, and then the information about, uh, like, so, I just wanted to make here, we, we are. So they, they are three items that had been voted on, the rest is not, is that correct?
Review the administrative record and come back to you with that information to be precise.
Okay, so if you, i- if you can do that before Friday, so by Friday, we have that information. Uh, to be more concise with, or, or, as well, thank you.
Good, we'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, so I wanna encourage all my councilmembers, uh, colleagues here to, um, to, um. Read the attachment to and send out any, um, opposition in particular, but any comments. On these, um, expenditures before Friday, so that's an encouragement. Um, I can't, you know, we can't direct each other what to do, but certainly we can encourage them. And so we, we agreed to, um, just hear from the speakers unless there's another motion to extend further. Um. I do not hear any, um, I do wanna make, um, a, uh, before adjourn, before we adjourn, I wanna, um, do a memorial, uh. A memoriam for, uh, David Moore, David Moore, uh, was a Point Richmond resident. He passed on a little over a week ago at the age of eighty-three. In addition to being a Point Richmond resident, he was an artist, a progressive, and a political cartoonist. Um, he really stood up for his values and for the values of the progressive community. He will be sadly and sorely missed by many of us. He, he did handle the websites of, um, many progressives, uh, I can say. Uh, speaking for myself, he handled many of my websites over the years, um, both created and maintained. Um, so he will be sadly missed, and that is all I have, is there anything else from any other councilmember in terms of a memorial? I guess not, with that, this meeting is adjourned.